The seven o'clock meeting of the town council on August 24th, 2021. Y'all please stand for allegiance in a brief moment of silence.
But to the United States of America and to three one fans on a nation under God and in this all will be addressed.
Thank you very much. Okay, that gets us to number four, prosthesis and presentations we have been on tonight. Five, public petitions, communications and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. If you are on Zoom, if we're finding if you put your your computer on speaker mode, you can see better what's happening in the chambers. If you have anything to add to tonight's conversation, you can click the raised hand button. If you're on a phone, it's star nine, we will answer you in order of your hand being raised. Please state your name and address if I call on you.
And if you're in the audience, go up to the chair and state your name and address.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot about all the people here.
Sorry, I was trying to do the timer. You got it.
Not seeing anybody, that gets us to number six. Oh, sorry, yes.
This is all the participation time?
Yes. If you'd like to come up front here.
Evening. Sammy.
How are you?
My name's Walter Blom, I'm the Chair of your Commission on People with Disabilities and Talent. And I'm here simply to say that we would the idea of a working group or, you know, some kind of a function in town to explore accessibility to town green and sidewalks. Typically, what we'd like to see, and we hope we would, we would be able to participate is that we convene or solicit experts' testimony and some kind of, say, a panel format to educate us in what the options are. I think there's a lot of technology available to make this happen. And before we dive into any debate on what should be done, I hope we would learn about what the options are. So we'd all be educated about, you know, what's possible, what the costs are or aren't, and go from there. So that's my statement, thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have that on the agenda tonight for eight four to start talking about that workshop. And prior to the commission being formed, we actually did a walk along in the green and I have all the notes from that historic district. And I believe you were there also.
I was there.
And so about grants and stuff like that. So we want to kind of take the next step on this now and discuss it tonight and bring the historic district commission plus the commission with people with disabilities and the town council together. So thank you for the input. I'm hoping you'll stick around for the conversation on eight four.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know why it's not picking you up as speaker.
Please.
Yeah.
Because it's because of this, if I have this down, it tends to come to me. But if I have it on, I can, I can go back to my high school cheerleading days if I need to project the voice a little bit more.
I don't know. I, it's not even getting me and I'm right there.
There you are. It's got you now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you see.
I was just thinking up in the, right in the center.
Yeah.
We see Mike.
If I lower this, it tends to pick me up. All right, no other public participation, then we are going to go on to our agenda, public hearing items. And tonight we have six dot one, consideration of a resolution. Chapter forty-seven A of the town code ordinance seventy-seven of the Veterans Recognition Commission. Lisa.
Okay, you want to open the public hearing?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to kind of give a little, a high level, I guess. So we're going to have the public hearing on the proposed changes that we had talked about for the Veterans Recognition Commission. And also, if that's okay with everybody, I would like Kern, who is now the Chair of the Veterans Recognition Commission, to kind of give an overview of the meeting that they held to review the proposed changes and get feedback from the commission prior to opening the public hearing, if possible. So we can have that conversation now, then we'll open the public hearing for anybody who has any other input. Are you good with that? Okay, perfect.
You want to have Reese give the highlights?
Do you want me to just give the highlights of some of the changes?
Have a seat there.
So within the proposed changes, the major areas that were changing was taking our commission, which is currently composed of five members and increasing it to seven members. It also is going to include other armed force members as well as extending membership to extended family of our veterans who are here in town. I think that was everything pretty much in the change. Was there anything else?
I think that's about it, right?
Yeah, I think that's, that's, that's what I'd like to hear from Kern and then we could have discussed it amongst ourselves as well as during the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Kern, the first thing I would like to say is when I read your minutes, I am thrilled that you guys have four applicants for two, for two openings. That's great. So if you want to have a seat, that's easier for you, it's up to you.
I'm a firm matter, that went thirteen, Tallinn Williams Way at Tallinn, Connecticut. And I guess I'm now in the hot seat.
You are now reportable to us.
Well, I retired fifteen years ago and right out of the barrel, I went to the WPCA and I served on committees in town on those fifteen years, so.
Thank you, thank you for that.
And I've been with the Veterans Commission, this is my sixth year, so I'm on my second term. And as you know, we lost one member and then one resigned. So we had a meeting on the fifth of August, all three members were present. And it was to say we run to the gun and there's a lot of things that needed to be discussed and whatever. We ran it to seven sixteen, there's a story there, I don't think we remember, started at seven o'clock. But the meeting began. And we acknowledged the resignation letter of I was then, you know, the Chairman of the Commission. And I was happy to say that we had four applicants at the time to be filling the two seats on the commission. So I don't let grass grow on my feet. We met with Jason. And Jason couldn't pronounce his last name. But we met with Jason and all three of us were extremely impressed. He is a National Guard Reserve Army, he is currently on duty. And the thing that we loved about Jason is we had discussed what we were looking for. And what we were looking for to answer your question on this whole issue is before we had just five military people on the commission, there was no real focus other than the wall and, you know, sending out packages, the people are overseas and receiving them and, you know, following the guidelines. And it became very apparent, one through the many people in town already that are very interested in one particular project, but other projects. And having been in sales and made things happen, we had discussed it and what I wanted to do was find two people, one who had engineering or construction capabilities, who would be able to follow up and see that the job that we were working on was going to be designed correctly, implemented and you have a good output. And the second person, I wanted to be somebody that was pretty well-known in the community, was very friendly and somebody that people could relate to. And when they called the commission, he would be the first person to talk to them to find out what it is they had on their line. And he would bring it to the commission, we would then entertain it, probably bring people in and discuss it further. And it would then be implemented as a project that we're going to do in the current day, advertise the heck out of it. And Jason would follow up and ensure that it gets done. So we're hoping that that concept starts a good dialogue on how we can get more than just two people involved. I would rather and I think the big project right now. And, you know, every year I would videotape a Royal Day Parade or whatever. And so this past year, I had outlined the two thousand sixteen parade. And I noticed that, you know, I always get the scouts and the veterans putting the wreath on the monument. And two thousand sixteen, you could read everything on the monument. About a week ago, I was walking to town hall or something, I stopped and took my camera and took pictures. And you couldn't even read God on the monument. So yes, we have a major problem here. And we have one people in town that recognize it and want to do something about it. So I can guarantee you that by the time the scarecuffs walk on the town green, that monument is going to look pretty nice. And the way we're likely doing this one is in our minutes, we have had a great conversation with Claudette Morehouse. And she has a group of ladies, like my wife is involved with Garden Pass and, you know, all of the things that they do as a doctor around town, keeping it up. She is willing to take that monument all over, say, you know, spot in town, that's their group would be kind and keep it moving. Again, I also, the first time, met Scott Lockett, very impressed. He and I get along very, very well and he's totally on board on anything we want to do. And specifically that location, because you can see all the top of lines and power lines and everything else. The only thing is, we're going to dig in the dirt, you know, to get my call ratio, we did the title of Call Before Your Date to make sure so I assured him that we would do that. So the point of mind is, our conversations, we feel that we've started in a different path to try to make the Veterans Commission a little more responsive to things that are happening in the town. And the other I was going to say, you know, the events that have been happening over the last couple of weeks, I mean, we all know. The veterans are going to be very, very important as they come. And this is upsetting to all of us. And it's up to us, if we can, for veterans as they come back. I don't want to be a nut bit. I was very, very fortunate, I was radio tech at the front command post, I had a pretty good job. But a lot of guys, my cousin and stuff, you know, they were in those spark holes out in Vietnam, calling around on the ground. It was a wonderful thing. And so I think the three of us, and I know Justin, and we know, as of this afternoon, can our fifth person, Carl Davis, is going to be coming up before you, on the fourteenth of September for our fifth member. And mostly probably none of these, he's been with the department for twelve years. Very delightful guy. Great in audience, so he will fit that boat perfectly, interplacing with the community and seeing that we can get to do whatever needs to be done. So our discussion. So the commission, so I had the commission, us three, voted to recommend to the town council that the commission membership and qualifications currently in place remain at five. I am myself, and so is Bob, and so is Gray, we are willing to work with anybody. And women groups. What I would like to see is the commission working with groups that have projects they want to do. And I'm a lion and, you know, we do the road race every year. And I mentioned, because I was checking into it, I'm doing a virtual race last year, because that's all you can really do. And that's something I would like to do for veterans down the road. I've already started looking into the coffee house. I've already had conversations with Barbara at the library. And she is willing to look for us, she was a media role, like on a fourth Thursday for a coffee house for veterans in town. So I've got a lot of things that we're not going to discuss right now, but we're going to be doing things. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much for that, for that rundown, I appreciate that. And I think it's great, I think what you're talking about is great. I've been to the community center in Wellington and they do coffee houses there when I went there, or at least fifty vets ranging all different wars there, and it was amazing to see, to see that community come together. I'd love to see something like that in Tallinn.
Yeah. My senior warden, he knows out at Danielson, and Danielson has the largest ward in the state. They're over a hundred people.
Wow.
And they really do it right. And so I'm going to be going out there in the rest of distant future.
I definitely encourage you to go to the one in Wellington also there. Diane, yeah, she's great. So it's a, it's a great opportunity for partnership, they do a lot of things for vets. So I'm, I'm really happy that you guys have found four people come forward to definitely for the council. And I appreciate the fact that you guys had to throw a meeting together and sit down and talk. But I think you got some productive, some productive movement out of it. And we'll start to see a lot more community engagement, I think, with the Vet Veteran Recognition Commission, which I think hands down is, is probably one of the best things that has happened this year.
But our first lady, we're the blue spoke around the town.
I like that. Come from the right side.
Thank you, manager. First off, I'd like to thank you for, all of you, for what you're doing. I mean, just in the past five years, seeing how much has been done in the past two months with the VRC is just outstanding. I mean, you went from something that people really didn't know about to now, pretty much everyone in town knows about it. Everyone wants to get involved in it. And that's something that really says a lot about, about the leadership, about the people that are involved now. And so I really can't tell you how much I really appreciate everything you are doing. And your vision, you know, you and I have talked, and that your vision, I think, is outstanding. And I think it's really going to make the VRC really a very preeminent group here in town. That, I love the issue of the, part of the coffee house, part of the Danielson Veterans Coffee House up there. Before they moved to the apartment, I would go, actually, they had it right behind where the courthouse is. So I could walk back there, grab coffee, listen to speakers and get back into work before we actually started court. So it's a great thing. I'm very excited to hear that you're looking at that for here in Tallinn as well. I think that will be a great thing, because we do have a very vibrant veterans community here. It's just that we're separate, that we don't have anything together. And I think that with, with what you're doing, I think that will definitely bring everybody together and get us as a united group here. So thank you, I especially appreciate your comments regarding, regarding our veterans. And as you know, as an OIF, OEF veteran myself, the past few weeks have been very difficult for myself and for many of the guys on my teams, and many of the guys that I work with. And I think, and just talking to other veterans who have been in a similar situation here in town. I think that this is something with, especially with how you, what your vision is and what the, what the commission's vision is, I think will really go beyond what we've had, we're just a simple recognition group to actually go into the things that Kathy talked about last meeting or two meetings ago, where you're going out and you're, can actually be offering things for veterans, making them aware of some of the things that are out there. Some of the counseling sessions, some of the things the VA offers, that the BFJOU, American Legion offers out there. And so I think that's something that, you know, a lot of people need right now. And so I appreciate that. I do have a question though, based upon your comments, based upon our prior discussions on stuff. So as far as for the membership, that is it, that you're looking for, just to keep it at the current five? Or is it something that has been, you know, discussed and actually previously, I think, discussed at the last meeting, a possibility of keeping the main five veterans and then having two alternates that could be veterans and that the preference would be filled with veterans. But if the two alternate positions are not filled with veterans, having it open up to our family members. Just so we can know how to frame this discussion and frame what we're going to do here. Because of course, what, what the, what the group of you here, your recommendations are, are important. And so I just want to make sure that we're clear so that as we start discussing it, is it that keeping it at the five, flat how it is now, or expanding it, as you said before, opening up to other people as alternates to allow them to participate if necessary, giving the preference to veterans, but also opening up to family members. Can you discuss that or can you at least let us know what, what that recommendation will be?
Because I have absolutely no prejudices whatsoever in reference to the topic. However, I think you have to realize, all of us veterans, it's a brotherhood. I happen to be a cardholder of the first veterans that ever were in this country, the sons of liberty. And it's a very tight membership. Like in our meetings, you know, somebody will make a comment and then you get a war story.
Right.
And I don't know of something that's had a child that's killed, how would they react to that? Whereas to me, it sounds like reasons people that want to do something for very obvious reasons and very pure reasons. And I have nothing against that, but I think that the mechanism we've set out, I would rather see it be an auxiliary group. Like you could get, well, we have had a lot of women groups in town. And I understand some of them are starting to disperse because there just is nothing for them to sink their teeth into. And this is something you can sink your teeth into. And so what we're, what we're saying is, we'll make sure that it gets run, we'll make sure that anybody that wants, has an idea that wants to put it forward, it's going to be addressed and they can, you'll be part of the group, have a representative of the group if it's a big project. Like when we really get into the the database for what we're going to do with the monuments and stuff, I mean, you know, that's going to be a long process. So for a particular project like that, I guess we might want to have somebody representing that group that wants to do something in town with that.
But so, but for the, so what I understand is the core group, you want to keep it at the core five. Okay, just again, just so I can understand and just so we can make sure that we, we're clear on it as well. Because I know there's a few different possibilities, a few different options that we'll discuss, just so that we're clear. So it's the, the main, the main VRC will be five. And if it's something that based upon your experience, where if at a later point, you have enough people that are family members getting involved, then you'd be able to make that recommendation saying, look, as a VRC, we would like to also propose an auxiliary to the VRC where the family members could be involved. And that would be sort of a subset of the, of the VRC itself. Okay.
As I know, and I can see a lot of people wanting to get involved with dinners and all kinds of things in town to raise money for doing things for veterans.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate that. And then as far as the expansion, the actual definitions, so based upon what you're saying, removing the issue, removing the family members, that one section regarding expanding it to family members, removing that, but keeping it as the, as the definition is under the Title, Title X USC definition that, that, that recognizes what veterans is. Is that something that's acceptable to VRC as well? Like adding it into Space Force, adding into, adding into the merchant marines that would, that had served in that period of time.
Let's just say I've dealt with a lot of architects, engineers, and so after checking, checking this out, which you're saying, yes.
Okay, great, awesome, thank, thank you.
You're very welcome. So I have one question then. So I know part of the problem with the VRC in the past has been they've been getting quorum. So.
They're getting what?
Quorum.
It won't be happening now.
Well, I'm happy to hear that, but I'm just wondering if, if we were to keep the five alternatives, alternates, I'm sorry, two alternates, since you have four people that are applying right now, would that be beneficial to the VRC?
To other people and both of them have indicated that they would be very happy to work on, you know, a project or something, so.
So would, would keep it, would expand it, keeping it at five, but adding two alternates? Would that be helpful to you guys from the perspective of having meetings, if somebody can't make it or show up and you have a quorum issue, you could have an alternate there?
And then we have two guys that are military that would get, print those slides right this morning.
Okay, so that would possibly be favorable to you guys then? And then I love the idea of an auxiliary unit. I'm, I'm a family member, my brother did two tours in Afghanistan, so yeah, been around a couple of weeks, but.
Because we want you to get interested and involved, because you have a reason to get interested in it.
Right, right, absolutely. So I love the idea of an auxiliary, a military auxiliary group. But I'm, I'm, I think when we get to the, when we get after the public in that, when we start talking about it, I think it's to have into adding alternates on.
Yeah, we're just in the corner, I can see where, you know.
Yeah.
We're just three.
Right, you know, if somebody doesn't show up, you can't have a meeting. So, and that puts a, puts a hold to what you guys want to do. So having alternates does give that opportunity.
I like to speak to that, I've been on this for six years. My sixth year, I do not recall a problem with getting a forum.
Okay.
I don't believe a meeting was canceled because of the forum that I can recall. It may have been a short meeting, because it's not many, anything like that. Are you going to form on this committee? Nope.
Okay, perfect. Brenda?
Hi, good evening, Brenda's Lucy here. I took a look at the town councils goal. And one of them is to work together and build a collaborative working environment with other boards and commissions. I'm a little disappointed to hear some members say things like, you're reportable to us in this meeting and in previous meetings and using other language that shows that we have some sort of authority and that this board of commission needs to bend to what we ask. I'd much rather see a collaborative discussion going back and forth and to ensure that the commission has the opportunity to speak with its entire membership to give us a recommendation. It's obvious that they spoke about having five members and not going up to seven. They did not have the opportunity to speak about having auxiliary members. So I, I'm again going to push to ensure that this commission has more than enough time to consider everything that has been put on the table and that we actually listen to their recommendations instead of trying to push onto them what we feel should be done. They're the experts, they've been on this commission for years. And I'd like to thank them all for their service to this, to this country and to this town. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the council have anything before we open? Sorry, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, no problem. I was just going to recommend, regardless of whether the council creates alternates or you establish an auxiliary, I would recommend, if you're willing to reach out to the conservation commission, they have their kind of core of civilian volunteers that help out on the trails and that framework and structure might be beneficial and possibly even the cert team, which I believe Kern, you're a member of the cert team. That, that would be probably a good, reach out to, to me about that, because they would be very beneficial for that. But I do appreciate the updates and in terms of the qualifications, I think maybe you did clarify that already with someone else's question. But for the qualifications that you recommended, was that only in relation to one and two that you were against? Or is it all, or was it all one, two, three and four, my apologies, in terms of including the merchant marines and changing the code?
I think that we agree most highly with, you know, everything you have stated. The only issue is, you know, this five, seven situation.
Okay.
If we were going to get into a negotiation, I was I was going to recommend that if we did have family members, in most cases, they're, they have something that they want to do. And it's a timeframe thing. And at that point, I suppose we could negotiate that those terms would be one year renewable. So if a project was going back for more than a year, because, you know, I'm a big Clint Eastwood fan, we all remember the movie The Good, The Bad and The Other. And so, as I said before, it's a brotherhood and we think a certain way. And what we don't want, we want harmony in the group. If somebody's got an agenda, well, they wouldn't want to deal with it.
I appreciate that presentation, thank you. And I'll save any other comments for the public hearing.
Okay, not seeing anything from anybody else, I think we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing now. So anybody from the public at this opportunity that.
I think you can make a motion.
No, I know, I haven't made the motion. Anybody in the public right now will have the opportunity to raise their hand and speak on this when we open it up. You get to, again, state your name and address for the record. If you're on a device, just raise your hand. If it's on the phone, it's star nine, and if you're in here, just raise your hand. Um so go ahead.
Steve Johnson making a motion to open the public hearing? No, sorry about that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Uh Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Oh, John's on?
I'm an aye. I'm here and I'm an aye.
Right there. All right, I'm not used to you not here, you're not right here. All right, so we're gonna open up the the public hearing now. Again, if you would like to speak, raise your hand on a device, star nine on your phone, or raise your hand if you're in the room. Uh Sophia Johnson? Sophia?
Oh, she is unmuted, so maybe she's having an audio issue.
Oh, is it on you?
She's unmuted.
I know, she's not unmuted, so.
Well, maybe maybe for the time being, skipovers of people that have audio issues, and I know it's Brian McCann that's next.
Uh Ryan? McCann?
Hi, good evening. Uh Ryan McCann, sixty-two, Cross and Drive. Uh just wanted to certainly say thank you to the V R C and uh for all that they have done. I think um a lot of the uh activity as of late is great movement. Um and I think that has generated, to lose point, generated a lot of interest across town, and that's fantastic. Um so really glad to hear that. I just wanted to voice my opinion that I I do think that we should take uh the interest of the V R C first. And if they're plugging along at five, uh there's no need to push them to do seven or to try to push them to do alternates. Uh but feels like we're we're trying to guide them in a direction that that uh isn't something they necessarily need and there isn't necessarily precedent for. So that would just be my two cents. Um and again, wanted to thank uh Bob and team and for all of they, all of the work they've done. Welcome, Justin, to the to the group, uh or soon to be welcomed to the group, and uh keep up the good work.
Thank you. Uh Sophia, are you ready?
Yeah, I think so. Can you hear me?
Yep, you can hear me now.
Okay, I do apologize, this is a little bit of technical difficulty, but I just wanted to um just um see if there would be, you know, another look at being amenable to adding two alternates. We've had the threat of storms, we have the threat of family illness, we have the threat of many different things that can cause for a member to not be present, and there is no harm from what I can see with having alternates. They're just there to speak if someone cannot step in, which will allow for continuity. If we just rest on, I think that it would be good to have a healthier and more open group of seven, because then it'd be, you know, less pressing to rely on alternates, but to have a commission of five and then add two alternates. I don't see the harm in that. I've, you know, with my experience in municipal government, I haven't seen many commissions without alternates. It's a safety net for whatever, just in case. It's an alternate member that has a voting privilege when um when there isn't a quorum, when there isn't a member present, or whatever have you. Um I believe that the, with the structure of the commission and with understanding the best way for the organizational management, also to borrow from the experience of the town council as a guidance, because they deal with many different commissions and boards that deal with different recommendations, people that step in when other people aren't there. So to say that, you know, you just want to alienate and not, you know, to so look at it as a collaborative is excellent, but to also understand that the the people that are at the, on the town council level, they have, it's incumbent upon them to ensure that the best process is that's in place is one that's going to be workable within the community, for the community. And as a person that has seen the memorial, needing just to have bushes trimmed, that's something that I've been banging the drum about since Memorial Day, and the bushes aren't trimmed still. So I just think that having seven, if five cannot come around to it in agreement, or seven come to around an agreement, I think that it's just a healthier process to open it up to at least include two alternatives and to have that collaborative, of course, where you can work with the town council, who in turn work with every other board and commission that's there and may pick up any information that would be fruitful along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Kathy Bach? Kathy? You have to unmute.
Sorry.
All right. You muted again.
There you go.
That's probably muted seven sixteen.
Kathy, you're on mute.
Third time's the charm?
Oh, we got you now.
Okay, that's the third microphone I tried to unmute. Okay. Kathy Bach, two fifty-five, Towne Stage Road. Uh first off, I would like to support the Veterans Commission and their recommendations. I think that if nothing else, they certainly should have the first opportunity to have their recommendations tried out. And to to give them that opportunity. I think that the idea of an auxiliary, a task force or a special projects group working with the um Veterans Recognition Commission is is an opportunity to try something new. I think that working with the council is 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 the way that they should be able to to function, at least in the first steps, and I I support them completely. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Uh anybody else? Anybody in the oven? No? All right.
Steve Johnson making a motion to close the public hearing?
Lou, we're all stuck in it.
Any discussion? Uh all those in favor? Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Peta?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye, that's unanimous. All right, so the public hearing is now closed. So um we got to hear from the Veterans Recognition Commission, and we got to hear from the public. I'd like to just kind of reiterate, I I love the idea of a military auxiliary group, and I personally would see that as something that they would handle, that they would, they would create a list of people, whether it's project-driven or anything else, um and that would be something that was a hundred percent solely under them. And we wouldn't have any part of, like, the appointment of anybody. That's my opinion on that. And after talking and listening to what they said, I I don't think it would be a bad thing to give the alternates um an option to have alternative things needed now, but keep the five uh as military only. That's my opinion. Um anybody else? Lou?
Go ahead, I'll go for her.
Yeah.
And then I'll hit everybody up there.
I'm just speaking about the alternates. Um I think we should, I like the idea of alternates in those situations. Uh I don't think uh well spoken about keeping it only for veterans and not expanding any alternate or any other positions to anybody else but veterans. You know, the alternates not only help with the quorum situation, if that's an issue, but it's also a great kind of stepping stone for your next numbers in any group. You know, once people step away or whatever, you know, or your core members leave, uh don't come back for reappointment, you have a couple people waiting in the wings as alternates who would be your uh go-to choice to come out and step up to that more of a full-time role as a uh as a member there. So I I I'm a, I'm a big fan of adding the possibility of uh two alternates, uh but keeping it veterans.
Okay, uh Lou?
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. I would uh I would actually concur with uh with Mr. Schenner. I think that my proposal would be is that under uh section forty-seven A dash one, that we strike provision four, that includes the uh family members, based upon the input from the uh from the V R C. Um I think that everybody uh on the V R C, I know that they gave this a lot of consideration. I know this is something that was very, uh very well thought out, and I have no reason to doubt their uh sincerity about it uh or that their uh their willingness to include the family members as part of an auxiliary if they feel that it's appropriate or need them. I think that's a a great alternative uh to uh to this. So that my proposal again would be striking section four under forty-seven A dash one, the proposed uh proposed changed code to eliminate the family, uh to eliminate the issue regarding the family members. And then under uh forty-seven A dash two, uh that I would uh recommend, or my proposal would be, is that we change it to that the Veterans Recognition Commission shall consist of five uh five full-time members and two alternates who meet the requirements as set forth uh above. And I think that would, again, satisfy where, that doesn't mean that they would need to fill the alternates. That doesn't mean that they, that it has to be, but it gives them the opportunity where, given the fact that hopefully we can grow the V R C, that we could get more people on board, and that way, you know, for me, military operations, you always need a continuity of operations. You always need a contingency plan and uh and the order of succession. So that way, if if any of you decide that, you know, you've had enough and that it's something that 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 you'd like to uh to continue on in a different direction, that we have some of the younger uh members here that have, already have the experience of being on the board, see how it's operating and that they can move in. So I think that that's something that, there's a value added on that. Again, the alternates would be alternates, so that you would still have the five core voting members with the two alternates that could actually learn the ropes. And that it would be essentially the junior officers that are learning from the more senior officers and seeing what works and can step in if necessary at a later point in time. That's what my proposal would be. Again, gentlemen, I thank you all very much for your time and your deliberations on this. This is something that I know, based upon my discussions with Karen, that is, was very, very well thought out. And I'm very optimistic, uh very uh very happy to see the direction that the V R C is heading right now. But I think it's only gonna uh get better from here. So thank you all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Uh Brenda?
Thank you. Uh Brenda Felusi here. I support what the commission has requested and has has asked for. And I also um take into consideration the recommendation of Kathy Bach to support the recommendation of the commission. I believe she had told us previously she was on the town council when they helped create this commission um and has, you know, historical knowledge that is beneficial. Do not believe that we need alternates from listening to the testimony of the members of the commission. They said that they have not had an issue with quorum. I also do not believe that the having alternates is going to help with with the continuity. They don't, they're open and welcome to have people attend their meetings at any time. And they've embraced anybody who has attended any meeting, listened to their ideas, and tried to incorporate them uh into their mission. Um so I don't believe that we have a need to have alternates because the exes who are running the commission and who have run the commission and been members of the commission for many years say they don't need it. So let's be responsive to what the commission is asking for and follow their recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with everything that Mr. Lubin, Mr. Schenner said. But I defer to the commission. If they think five is the way to go, then I I think we should go with five. I do think alternates is a good, are a good idea for all the reasons that uh Mr. Lubin and Mr. Schenner mentioned. I don't need to rehash those, but that's where I stand on this. I defer to the commission. Uh if they want five, then I think we should have it at five, but I do think alternates are a good idea.
Thank you. Anybody else on the on the council?
Yeah, I I I tend to lean with uh what what John said as well. Where we're defaulting to the commission. I see the value in having uh the the alternates um for for um concerns of quorum, not that there has been any. Um but moving forward, we don't know what life holds. So there's that, as well as what uh what what Kurt said about, you know, um getting getting new members used to um the the duties and the roles and and what's expected. But, you know, I'm I'm I I think I'm in agreement with with John and defaulting to the commission's requests for now.
Okay, Steve?
Um I actually, I I didn't understand why I'm actually gonna defer to uh Mr. Maynard if they'd like to speak or I think there's something hand raised that from the commission, if either of you would like to speak.
So being the the chief is usually the oldest guy in the tribe.
Wait a minute, I don't know if I like that, because I'm the chief here.
The question is, when I was on the W O P C, I was an active member of the first three years, and then I was an alternate the next three years. And basically there, if somebody was listening to give you a call signal, you said, oh, the meeting, is that the definition of an alternate?
Correct.
You have a vote the night that you were there.
Yes.
But you don't really have seven votes.
No.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, so you would have your basic five.
And in essence, like tonight, if it wasn't just me, I'd rather have been playing golf, so.
Right, if somebody can't be there for whatever reason, you would have one of your, you would seat one of your alternates at that point. Um many of the commissions have that, planning and zoning, lots of the of boards and commissions have it. So it would just be somebody who, we don't have five today, we have two alternates, you know, we're gonna seat Mr. Lubin as the alternate. So you still have five people voting.
Oh, yeah, okay.
If two people don't show up, you would seat both of your alternates.
And you'll say, since it's open to anybody anyway, the alternates can always be there, be.
Yes.
Join this one turn on or whatever, but the five members are the ones that are voting, whatever.
Correct. If all seven people came, your five core would still be the ones that voted, and that would be it.
I'm great for wish, I I've been a uh member of Talon for about a hundred and eight years. And a member of the of the commission for six years. My question is, will the alternates have that expectation that if there's a vacancy, they they will automatically fill it?
Um no, at that point, if somebody left, say, Fern said, you know, I'm done, I don't want to do this anymore, you guys could get together and say, we have an opening, here are your two alternates, do you want to pick one of them to fill it? Or or they could come back and say, no, I don't, I don't want a full voting, right? I just want to be an alternate when you need it, and then you could get somebody else from outside. That's who, how they're placed on the board is up to you guys.
Agreed.
So it's up to you to say, we're gonna take this alternate and make him or her um a full-time member. Or no, our two alternates are good, and we're gonna open it up to whoever in Talon wants to do it. Because an alternate does not have to come on to the board as a voting member um if there's an opening. They might not want that commitment.
It's good to understand that we have, what was the population of Talon now?
Almost fifteen thousand.
Okay, so we, in essence, we have fifteen thousand.
Yes.
Alternate members, people that are welcome to come to these meetings, welcome to come to our meetings and give us, give us all their input.
Right. Perfect.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any of the two other members?
No, I I just appreciate that clarification. That was my main comment, so I'm in concurrent in concurrence with Council of Lubin about eliminating uh section four, forty-seven A, as well as amending forty-seven A dash two to be five members. My leave at this point would be if if the um members in existence are here, that are here, are in favor of alternates, I'm okay with that language being added to the final document that's approved. But I was a little bit uncomfortable trying to make that change on the fly without having the entire V R C in attendance to kind of provide their input on that matter. So I do feel a little bit more comfortable hearing from them directly in this engagement. That's just where I stand right now.
Okay, so I think the proposed changes at this point would then be, Lisa, so you know, we're gonna, we would be striking four from forty-seven A dash one. And actually, in the first sentence, where it says the Veterans Recognition Commission composed of five members, who shall be town residents, legal voters of the town, and two alternates. Um and then in forty-seven A dash two, we would make that same um change, go from seven to five members who meet the requirements as set forth above with two alternates. And I think everything else that is in the proposed changes would stay the same.
Did you say strike uh number four?
Yes, I said that first, strike number four from forty-seven A one.
And I think that, if I may, Madam Chair, just to make it a uniform for the languages, that so for hundred forty-seven A dash two, the membership vacancies in terms, so uh paragraph A, the Veterans Recognition Commission shall consist of five full-time members and two alternates who meet the veteran, meet the requirements as set forth above. That way, it keeps legal parity with what you have as a uh. That way it keeps legal parity with what you have as a under forty seven A one, the first sentence. There should be. Commission composed of five full time members and two alternate members who shall be Talon. Legal voters of the town and. And then and then keep again, strike the subsection four or the line four.
Brenda?
Yes, I I want to be clear about appointing membership to the commission. The Veterans Commission does recommend their to the town council. But the town council has the final vote. So I want them to be clear and that is the procedure before they. Say yes or no, because it seems like you gave them the impression that it was their choice. As to who the alternate members and who their members are, when in fact we get to vote yes or no on their recommendations.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear from them if they're still comfortable with that change.
Thank you, Master. Well, I think that it's the same process that we've gone through to appoint the two new members. And so that you're aware of that, that it's something that you would put it forward, just like you did this past time. To add on the two additional members. So if there was the two alternates and then there was an open vacancy. And that you could either decide to include those two alternates or appoint somebody completely different and then present that to the town council. Just like you are this time. Is that something that that does that you all understand that correctly? No different process as as what we have right now. Okay, thank you.
All right.
I'm sorry, I I didn't hear the response.
Response is, we can live with that. From twenty years ago.
All right, then I think, do you wanna go ahead and make the resolution as change?
So Steve Jones, I make a motion that being resolved with town council hereby amends chapter forty seven A of Talon Code. Order number seventy seven, Better Recognition Commission as amended.
Smooth while seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I abstain.
Steve?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye, so that is six ayes and one abstain. All right, that passes. Thank you all very much for coming.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
And I definitely look forward to hearing what you guys are doing and the auxiliary group. Really excited for that, so thank you. You can have the same compensation that we get, although we make equal funding. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Well, you are gonna consider us cutting your budget though, right?
Well, you know, you guys should really talk about that, talk about that as a group. And if there's something that you want to move forward with, you mentioned a couple of things that I think are awesome. I love the idea of a run for vets. And I think, again, we can advertise that not just in Talon, but through the different veterans committees that are in other areas. And try to really do it a good solid, like a five K cider mill, but for vets. And the coffee house, I think, is an amazing idea. I think it's, you could definitely get. A lot of, a lot of participation in that. So if you guys have something specific that you are thinking about doing. And it's gonna require something from the town council or from budgetary perspective, if you want to bring that forward to us, we can look at that. Key thing, though, is to make sure you're looking at our budget calendars. Because anything that we are gonna consider for budget has to go into the cycle to be considered for the next budget. If there's money that's left at the end of the year, kind of a thing, we could talk about something then. But if you have something that you definitely want to do, put a plan together and bring it forward to us so we can, we can look at it and bet it. And again, look for ways and opportunities for fundraising for it. I appreciate that. All right, we are gonna go on to seven A reports of boards and committees. Yes, we'll do just, I'm sorry, we'll do your appointment at the end. You don't have to say for that. Thank you very much. We're gonna go on to seven A reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Brenda?
I'm fine with moving that part of the agenda forward if they genuinely want to be around for their.
They already all went.
All right. Okay, so first is tourism. We were supposed to have a meeting today, but it was canceled for various reasons, so I'm able to be here. One of the things that we're really excited about is our fall tourism campaign. It looks like all the budgets that are related to tourism marketing, which is our primary responsibility, are being finalized. But we're anticipating three times more of a budget than what we typically get, which is one point four million dollars for the fall paid. Advertising campaign. Many of our industry leaders were asked to. Participate in a survey to find out which version of the fall campaign they liked. I was really excited to see all different versions. It was very hard to pick between them. With the increase in the budget, we're going to be tripling our target reach from. Audiences in New York, Massachusetts, Connecticut, and Rhode Island. I'm really excited about that because Talon is right on eighty four. This is an opportunity for us to highlight our town. And connect with this fall campaign. We're taking a look at some TV ads. We're taking a look at expanding paid social media. So you might see some advertising on social media about visiting Connecticut during the fall. And we're going to really do a big reach for our out of home advertising for like especially New York City on digital billboards. So we're again really excited about that and there's more to come about Talon tour, I'm sorry, about tourism later on the agenda. For sustainable C T, there's no update. We have not had a meeting and that's it for that part.
Thank you. That gets us to seven B reports and commissions, reports of town council liaisons, sorry. Lou, I'm gonna start with you.
All right, thank you, Master. That Burt's Hill Building Committee, we did meet last week. In fact, there's also another special meeting that's going on tonight. That there were several minor change orders that were presented to us totaling less than ten thousand dollars from the overall budget. The biggest, the biggest news that we have, which which I know that Lisa has been appreciative as well, is that last week. That we were approved for our certificate of occupancy. So that means that essentially this project is complete. It was, it was definitely a quite a, quite a high point when I opened up that email and saw that we got the certificate. So that that means that essentially that we are on the tail end of it, that the rest of the work that's going on is just minor exterior things. That the overall work on the inside, other than just some of the painting and final, final furnishings and everything else are finished. So that's, that's outstanding news that right now the main, the other main things that we're working on are the. Again, addressing some of the other issues like the wireless portals for Wi Fi outside the school. For some of the other materials inside, furnishings, things like that. The state, I normally I hate saying anything positive about the state government. But that, you know, that I think that the Office of School Project Grants. Costa really came through for us on many different levels and made sure that the, that the funding on a lot of different parts of the project. We approved that Katie did an outstanding job leading the group. And I think it's something that that really the town of Talon can truly be proud of. And I'm excited about the upcoming grand opening, which is going to be so long as we don't have any rain or or. Coming up the shoreline is set for September eighteenth. That is gonna be from Lisa's.
I think it's ten and two.
Ten to two or ten to twelve.
I think it's ten to two.
Yeah, ten to two. So I'll be part of that, that I would encourage everyone else to be there. I think that the governor is supposedly going to be there, reportedly going to be there, so we'll, we'll see. But that's.
Ten to one.
Ten to one, thank you. So that's, that's all that I have to report.
Perfect, thank you. Kurt?
Thank you. Only meeting that I attended since our last town council meeting was the Monday sixteen. Mental health and substitution task force, kind of more of a, Mr. Rego was there as well. We might talk about it as well, but more of a housekeeping thing. We decided to keep our meetings fully remote for ease of attendance for our members. And talked about some next steps for task force. I think we got some good traction on kind of coming up with a rough draft of ideas of what we're going to present to the town council. So we can get those rough ideas and then hash them out a little more with additional meetings. The necessary, either town staff people or experts in the community where we like to be. And that was, and then we also have good discussion on doing a survey monkey, kind of do games or public insight. Engage, engage the community in that, that way. So that was kind of how I love that.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Brenda?
Hi, Brenda Felusi here. Blights is meeting in person on Thursday in conference room C. They're going to be electing their officers. They have an opportunity for public participation. They're gonna take a look at the determination of Blights and review what that is. And determine how their future.
You went, you went mute.
Don't know how that happened, sorry. Somebody met last night. They set a public hearing, I believe it's for September twenty seventh, for six different items. They've gone through and made zoning changes that were spearheaded from a number of different sources. But a lot of it was with the goals and with the P O C D changes. So one of the first items is they're taking the T V A, the Talon Village area. And they're replacing it with the Talon Village Area Gateway District, name change there. They're taking a look at changes to height restrictions, motor vehicle sales and repairs, affordable housing, outdoor dining. Which is always, well, right now, very important. In taking a look at creating some things that will have more admin approval so that some of the process works a little bit better. And that's for temporary accommodations. They're taking a look at master plan overlay zones. This allows a little bit more flexibility in discussion with planning and zoning with the applicants and it saves the applicants time and money. With what the planning and zoning may see or have visions for what their application is about. They're, they're also looking at repealing the aquifer protection area. It seems that we may have been overstepping our authority. When it comes to that, and we're going to also take a look in that area for identifying commercial industrial uses in a variety of zones. Four things, one is the amendment to special permits and site plans, in trying to streamline the process and make it easier for applicants. And then also amendments to access accessory dwelling units. Those are things like granny pods, in law apartments and things like that. We Talon was ahead of the curve on a lot of that and we're just finalizing it. So there's a lot there to take a look at. It means a lot of changes for Talon. And I hope that all the residents have an opportunity to take a look at this through the next month and attends the public hearing on the twenty seventh. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yes, thank you, Master. The W P C A did meet. I was unable to to attend that meeting, but I did do a quick review of the minutes. And there was discussion about the property behind Big Y, the Santini property. And that, that discussion led to the question about when that could start to to happen and and realistically, not until sometime next year. They still need to get various permits through planning and zoning. And so realistically, construction is, it won't take place until next year. Got an update on the water pollution control plant in Vernon. Everything's moving along smoothly there. There will be, however, a five percent increase for metered well usage next year, or actually this year. Once the October first, once that rate gets approved, the October first builder comes out will reflect that increase and then again in April of twenty two. So Rob Grasses, who's who is out of the Vernon plant noted that rates stayed flat. Last year, we actually reduced two or three years ago and he said connection fees will remain the same. And they also talked about the process by which Talon residents will will learn about these increases that are passed along from the town of Vernon. And then in old business, the sixty five Merrill Road update, item still pending. The owners are trying to coordinate the construction of the drive through. This is the Dunkin' Donuts with the sanitary sewer connection. So they're gonna do, try to do those things at the same time. And then the sixty two and seventy Merrill Road update, that's Poptees and Subway restaurants. Director Lappin said, still pending, fees have not yet been paid. And then the Woodside Drive update, Director Lappin said he's inspected seven out of twelve connections. Five are on another road and will be connected later. And let's see. And then the Star Hill update, Director Lappin said they paid the connection fee for the first building. The second connection is expected around November. And they did cancel their September meeting, so they won't be meeting again until October. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you very much. Steve?
Thank you, Master. So on the twelfth, the Conservation Commission met and actually had a few really interesting news items. One was that there was a resident, I think Edward Potipas is interested in donating their parcels to the town as part of their will. One property on Cook Road, one twenty three, I believe, of Butts, the Schindler's Schmidt area. And the other across the street from it, about a six acre parcel. In regards to the Hatch property, one of their alternates, Adam Grossman, is actually in the process of. Buying both the north and south section of that remaining parcel that was subdivided. I believe they're finalizing paperwork for that, but he does have an interest, at least a vested interest in negotiating a potential sale of the town for the marsh side of the property. Going forward, potentially discussing, you know, obviously it's very far in line, potential easements or sale of the other property. Allow potential access to Crandals if and when the same team developments trails are developed. So that was the main updates for that meeting. Also, they are looking to have an R F P done. For Forestry Consulting Services for trail management on all the trails in town. So they, earlier this year, they had a forester come and talk at one of the trails that has a lot of ash for trees and other impact. So they're looking to try and create a, a long term plan that a forester could come in, remove at risk trees. That could actually be lumbered and sold to help offset some of the costs and also. Pay for years to come. The Talon Water Commission's meeting was canceled on the sixteenth. So upcoming on the twenty sixth. He's having a sidewalk, so everyone's welcome to attend that. They'll be walking the Stopover Trail, which is off Hunter Road. And that's gonna be an update on the Stairway to Heaven project that's been ongoing there. In addition, they are having a sneak peek event for the wanted senior park on the twenty eighth. As well as planning a September gardener and senior event. Then in October, they're anticipating pending any, you know, knock on wood, pending weather, a grand opening October. I know that they had a few delays this past week with the torrential downpours on finalizing elaborate in the parking lot. Hopefully gonna have that done for October. So thank you to all the volunteers, by the way, that have been coming out to help throughout the past several weeks of the Conservation Corps. They've had a good mix of both youths, scouts and members of the public, as well as Conservation Corps members helping do that, so.
It's been fun. I highly encourage anybody to reach out to Barbara Mino if they're interested in donating some, some labor. To that project that's coming along very nicely. It's coming along very nicely. It was, it was fun when I went. I got, he, he took me on the tour back to the the water tower, and I did not wear rain boots. I was wearing sneakers. I wasn't sinking into the mud. But it was, that, that area back there with the water tower has the potential to be another great project. Yeah, I'm looking forward to what they come up with with that. In regards to the one twenty feet Cook Road, the people who are looking to donate to the town, I had, are you, have you guys talked to them about stipulations on their donation? I know some of like the ones, when they donated, they said it had to be used for something else.
At that last meeting, it was really just an initial, the resident had reached out to David Corcoran and just said, hey, I, I'm looking interested in possibly donating this town or donating this property to the town in my will, so when I pass away, it will automatically be transferred over to the town. And I think he was going to reach back and find an update, probably at the next regular meeting in September. So there hasn't too much traction on the legal lease or, you know, if, if that was to be something considered, that's probably, we go through the land acquisition advisory council. Even written will, we'd probably have to approve that retroactively, so.
I think it's just, it's important to listen to the, the people who want to donate their land, so that we, we don't do anything with it five years down the road that they wouldn't have wanted. So if they're going to donate, if they have any stipulations, it'd be good to get that out there.
Yeah, and interviewing the minutes, David Corcoran did indicate he was going to ask the owner if he envisioned any restrictions, or if it would be purely for open space or conservation use, or if he'd want it to be preserved space.
Good, perfect. Thank you very much. That was a great update. I know you haven't gone to any meetings yet, so Bill.
True, I have.
Oh, you have? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all right.
The historic District Commission meeting on the eighteenth was canceled. I was able to be at the Commission on People with Disabilities on the nineteenth. And the first thing that they talked about was developing an official type of report to, to present to us with the things that they're working on. And they discussed some of the topics that they would like to have in there in the initial planning stage, so, so nothing impending coming to us yet. But they're definitely talking about getting something official to us. They, they also discussed the state survey that's, that's out about people with disabilities and what the biggest need for. And, and it was reported that, because you can, you can search the responses by town, apparently, and we've had twenty-one responses from Talon. And over half of those responses say that transportation is the biggest, is the biggest issue. And with that discussion, that led into the sidewalk discussion, which is why Walt is here at this point. And so there was a lot of back and forth about that with the sidewalks and, and it was decided that Walt would come in and, and share his input. They discussed Celebrate Talon and that they'd like to have a table there with some information to, to, to make their presence known and get some information out there to, to the people of Talon. And they discussed the content of, of the webpage, what they would like to include, the different, the, the different things that they would like to include on their webpage, and, and they're, they're hoping to have a beta test version of that up shortly.
That's a lot of good movement. I, I think it'd be great to have a table at Celebrate Talon for sure. And I'm going to probably contact you to come back and get on your agenda at some point, because I was having conversations today regarding transportation issues in the rural areas. So I want to make sure that we're sticking close together on getting information out to people and also getting feedback from the commission. So I will be in touch. I miss you guys. All right. I do not have anything this week. We did have an Eastern Highland Health District meeting, but I was unreachable for the not attend that meeting, but we do have Rob Miller here today, and he said, do you want to update that?
We, I didn't bring my notes with me, but there was discussion on the, the mask policies of, of what's happening. They also had a doctor on board, and I'm trying to remember everything we discussed. I think there was also a discussion about the additional shots, but I think I'll leave it up to Rob to interject when he comes on.
Yep, he's going to give us a full update, so I think we can, we can get it done. All right, that gets us to eight, that one. Consideration of a resolution to authorize the submission of an application for the full year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three Connecticut State Department of Children and Families Youth Services Bureau grant in the amount of twenty-eight thousand three hundred and nine dollars annually.
Okay, this, tonight we have Beverly Bellaty and Nancy Dunn with us. They're on, on Zoom. And this is a grant that we get every two years. I think there's a little bit more allocated this year, and I'm going to let Nancy discuss it. But it's basically to serve the Youth Service Bureau with, to help them implement, evaluate, prevention, child, adolescent development, and outreach programs to both include advocacy and coordination of a comprehensive service delivery system for the youth and their families. The, the grant consists of two parts. One part is funded through our general fund and in our budget. This is one of our revenue sources of the general fund. And then there's a second part, which is, goes into a special grant fund to provide additional direct services to Talon's youth. And if Nancy or Beverly would like to jump in and discuss it a little bit more.
Nancy?
Yep, I'm, I'm not sure if you have any questions. These, these amounts are similar to the dollars that we have gotten before, and the financial summary splits them out into the same way that we have typically done them. Initially, the, the eighty-five, what's in there is the eighty-five thirty-seven, which is the enhancement funding. That is not awarded to us by state statute, where the other, the nineteen seventy seventy-two, seven seventy-two is part of their funding, so we will get that in some amount every year. The other amount is not something that we are guaranteed to get every year. So way back when we started this and get, receiving it in two thousand and seven, so that it didn't impact the general fund, we put it aside. In addition to that, it is used totally for direct service to youth and their families. It, it's not part of what can be used in supporting, like, the management of the Youth Service Bureau.
So Nancy, when you say that this is used direct for direct services to youth and families, can you give us some examples of what this, this money is funding or what programs we're doing?
We could, we can use this money for a variety of programs. Direct, direct service would be, for example, doing the, the Juvenile Review Board, during the case management for the Juvenile Review Board. It would be used towards hiring staff for our summer program, our summer musical program, if that comes back, or other programs. It cannot be used for the salary of a youth services coordinator for that piece, which we, we do for managing the, the bureau, doing research, grant writing, things like that, just managing it. It has to be for direct service.
Okay, so directly for programs specifically that are going to touch, touch you?
Correct, yep. Interaction with individuals.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions for Nancy? No. Bev, do you have anything that you want to add?
No, I think Nancy summed it up pretty well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Does anybody have any other questions or anything?
It's good to see Nancy again. I didn't think I'd see her on camera. It's a testament to your commitment.
Thanks.
Okay, then.
No other discussion? Steve Jones, a motion that be resolved at Lisa Hancock, temporary town manager of the town of Talon. And in her absence, the acting town manager is hereby authorized to make, execute, and approve on behalf of the Talon, Town of Talon the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three Youth Service Bureau grant application for funding offered by the Connecticut State Department of Children and Families, and any subsequent amendments and modifications between the Town of Talon and D C F approved by Talon Town Council on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Lou, I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm on aye, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Gets us to eight, that two. Resolution to authorize the submission of an application for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Local Prevention Council Grant offered by the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, Prevention and Health Promotion Division, in collaboration with the Regional Behavioral Health Action Organizations, or R B H A O, is amplified. Lisa?
Okay, this is another grant that we're fortunate to obtain. It's a non-competitive grant. It's based to use a community, to support the community, based on local prevention councils, grassroots coalitions that build community capacity to plan and implement substance abuse misuse prevention strategies for all ages. The principal, excuse me, stated, the most focus of the funding included in the twenty-one, twenty-two Human Services Budget is to reduce vaping uses around ages twelve to eighteen-year-olds and increase public awareness of the issues and risks related to vaping. I will turn it over to Nancy, if she has anything, or if you have any questions for her to discuss the costs involved.
So Nancy, I do have a couple of questions on this one. I'm sort of a bird on here, so, and none of them are tying out to the seventy-one oh two. So I wasn't sure. It says vaping issues during twenty-one, twenty-two, Talon received three thousand nine hundred seven dollars and forty cents to address vaping issues. And then it says it's eligible to receive forty-one fifty-two seventy-nine to reduce youth vaping and increase public awareness. And then it says the, the local priority problem substance is eligible to receive two thousand nine hundred and fifty. So I'm not sure the, what numbers tie out to the seventy-one oh two.
Okay, hopefully it's added correctly. The thirty-nine oh seven forty is what we have in the general fund, because that's what we got last year, and we didn't have the numbers for this year when we put the budget together. When they came out with the proposal, they actually gave us, for the vaping section only, they gave us four thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents, which is a difference of about two hundred and forty-six dollars. In addition to that, and this has never happened before, they have given us additional funding, and that's because we all were very upset about the fact that we had to spend our entire budget on vaping prevention and education. And we said, you know, we have other things that need to be addressed. So they took COVID money and they gave us another two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And obviously, by us, I mean towns that are similar in population to us. It varies by town. So what we did was, in the financial summary, we took the thirty-nine oh seven forty and said, okay, that's what we've got in the approved budget, and we'll take the balance of the total, which is the, that two hundred and forty-six dollars plus the twenty-nine fifty, and we'll put it, again, in the youth account, because we have a section called Other Federal and State Grants, and we'll put it in there, because we don't expect that that money is going to be available again next year. You never know.
That makes more sense. Thank you very much. So can you give us an example of some of the stuff that you're doing around vaping with the money, the, the three thousand nine hundred dollars, and what you plan to focus the thirty-two hundred dollars on?
Okay, the, I think the, the thirty-nine oh four seventy last year was used to assist in the development of a vaping section of the Skills for Adolescents Program. Because that's where we're going to get the kids to actually pay attention, is when they are taking a class. This year, I'm not sure what we're going to use the funding for, you know, specifically. One is because we've got a new Assistant Director coming on board eventually. And, you know, so we don't have specific programs, but they will, as soon as we can get back into the schools, we will start doing programs there, both for, for adults and children, like we have done before. And we also may take some of the suggestions from the Mental Health and Substance Use Task Force and implement some of those, some of those suggestions into using this money.
Perfect. Anybody else have any other questions for Nancy? Lou?
Thank you, ma'am chair. On that, I just have a, I mean, it's sort of off the topic of the vaping issue, but is there any talk of providing additional funding to address the issue of marijuana and, and given the fact that we're looking at now, within the state, the legalization of marijuana and, and addressing that, that issue within the high schools or anything along those lines?
We, I don't know whether Dr. Willett has heard about any money coming down through the Department of Education. We have not heard anything about, about any additional funding, although as a local priority problem, that would definitely qualify. So some of this two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars could be used towards this. Again, that's something that we will probably address, and it has been addressed at, at the task force level. C Y S A has also been looking at, you know, what kind of impact that's going to have. I know when Trooper Eklund addressed the task force, that was one of the questions that, that somebody asked him was, you know, what, what kind of an impact do you think this is going to have? And, and he was not, not thinking that it was going to be good. So.
Brenda?
Hi, thank you. I, I think we're all cognizant that our human services and many of our departments are on shoestring budgets. So I'm very happy that these grants are coming through to help assist you in whatever way we can to get issues addressed. Now, vaping is a, is a newer issue. I mean, it's, it's a few years old. It's gaining in popularity. Is there anything additional besides these grants that you may feel that us as a town council or us as a community can help address this issue? And I'm kind of putting you on the spot. If it's better to be addressed by the commission instead, that's fine by me. But, you know, I, I want to work in partnership and, and find a way to, you know, help you meet the needs of the community. So.
Actually, the, for the L P C, they're looking at specifically at youth between the ages of twelve and under eighteen. So that hits a square at middle and high school age, and we work very closely with the schools. Most of our J R B referrals have been for vaping. Last year, we found that kids figured out they could go for that short period of, that shortened school day without vaping. So, you know, we didn't have that, that issue last year, but I anticipate with the kids back in school, it's going to come back. So we've been very fortunate to work with the Board of Ed and with the, with the administrators, the Board of Ed and Dr. Willett in keeping kids who otherwise would have been expelled for their constant use, keeping them in school by referring them to the Juvenile Review Board and working that way.
Excellent. Thank, thank you for that. You know, one of the, one of the aside things I think the town council needs to take note on is we need to make sure that we create signage on where vaping is allowed and not allowed in town. Like on our public properties and our, in our parks. I was up in Maine, and they had a triangular sign that had no smoking, no vaping, no cannabis use. And they had symbols for each of those. You know, I think that's something that we on our end can help with, you know, as a reminder. But I, I appreciate everything you're doing and, and I am thankful to hear that you are working very hard to ensure that kids are not being expelled, you know. to ensure that kids are not being expelled, you know, being it in the community and working for it in education is vital. So I appreciate everything you do, and just in case, thank you for everything you've done to Talon. Miss you at the, the plays, I miss doing sets with you and costumes and everything. I hope that we can get that up and running next year, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Steve?
All right, there's no other discussions, Steve Jones, I make the motion that be resolved. At least Hancock, temporary Town Manager of the Town of Talon, and in her absence, the acting Town Manager, has been empowered to sign the 2021-2022 Local Prevention Council Grant, offered by the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, Prevention and Health Promotion Division, in collaboration with Amplify, the Regional Behavioral Health Action Organization, overseeing our region, regions, local prevention council initiatives, and any subsequent amendments and modifications on behalf of the Town of Talon, between the Town of Talon and Amplify, approved by the Talon Town Council on August 24, 2021.
Lou, move on second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Thank you very much, thank you Nancy, thank you Beth.
Thanks.
All right, that gets us to eight dot three, COVID update with Rob Miller from Eastern Highland Health District. Hi, Rob, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you, Madam Chairperson?
Oh, you know, I'm living the life. So, welcome, so our, our meeting tonight, I, I think we're going to talk a little bit about an update right now, and if I am correct, we're going to talk about masking?
Yes, just to preface all of this, earlier this week, I, on Sunday evening, I implemented a mask mandate policy within all town public buildings. Rob and I worked together on a policy that I had written, he reviewed it and was in concurrence with what I set forth, and I felt that, at this time, I wanted to strongly urge businesses to use masks within their, you know, employees, as well as their customers, except when they're eating or drinking, but I did not put that mandate in place, in order to, in the Governor's Executive Order gives the Chief Executive Officer the authority to put these mandates in place. So, for the time being, I have mandated masks in town hall and other town buildings when you're inside, unless, you know, there's certain stipulations that allow you to be exempt from that. And so that was one thing that we moved forward. I think I would love to have your discussion with Rob to get the feeling regarding businesses. Basically, I just told businesses, a decision is forthcoming, and I'm strongly urging that. We also had a meeting the other day, and I, Rob, if you could just highlight some of the items from the meeting, I'd appreciate that as well.
Sure, I'd be glad to roll that into my overall update, if, if that's okay, Madam Chairperson.
That's good. My first question on that is, I'm looking for clarification, because I thought the executive order was the town council would have to make that decision on businesses, and I'm seeing that in other towns, that it's like the town councils or the board of selectmen that are making those decisions for businesses. So I'm not sure, I said to Lisa, I don't know how that, how that's working, that it's her and not us, or us and not her, so I don't know if you could give some clarification around that also.
Well, um, you know, certainly I've read the, the executive order, and I'm, I'm not, let me preface this, these comes by state, and I'm not an attorney. But that being said, it's my understanding that the EO cites a section of the general statutes which references the authority of the Chief Executive Officer for the municipality. That being said, many chief CEOs of municipalities are obviously conferring or seeking support from their political bodies to implement such a mandate in their jurisdictions. And just by way of background, so far, the only municipality within this, within the Eastern Highlands Health District to have done that is the Town of Mansfield.
And I'm sorry, they did what?
They, they, Ryan Ailsworth executed an order mandating masking in all public settings, including businesses within the boundaries of the Town of Mansfield. He, and he got the, and he, and he asked the council to pass a resolution giving him the authority or, or endorsing his ability to do so.
Okay, so that's a big clarification, endorsing or giving the authority, so I'm assuming it was endorsing?
Well, I don't know, like I said, I could certainly provide the specific order to the Town of Talon, and, and that would not be a problem. My recollection is whether endorsed or authorized, again, off the top of my head, I can't recall. But I think, as I said, in the executive order from Governor Lamont, there is a reference to a section of the Connecticut statute, Connecticut statute, which references the authority of the Chief Executive Officer of each municipality. I would, if, if there's a question to that effect, you might want to confer with a town attorney on the matter.
Okay. Do we want him to just get into the update at this point?
Yeah.
Okay, Rob, you want to?
Sure. Absolutely, so, let's start out with some numbers. As of August, as of August 18th, we had the Town of, the Town of Talon's prevalence for the total count for a two-week period was at 22 cases, from the previous seven days, it was at 13 cases. I can tell you district-wide that we had a total of 52 cases during that, that particular week. And that number 52 represents about a four or five-fold increase over the previous five weeks. So we've seen significant increase in our case count during that period. I can tell you that, most recently, this current week, numbers seem to be plateauing, which is, which is also what appears to be occurring statewide. Hopefully that plateau continues, we'll be monitoring the situation very closely on a week-to-week basis to see if we are in fact plateauing. In terms of, in terms of rates, the, the Town of Talon is currently at 10.7 cases per 100,000, that's just above, that just, that puts you just within the town or DPH Town Response Framework or category orange. As far as the CDC, the CDC is actually placing Talon County in what they call substantial level of transmission, which is just one level below their highest, which is high level of transmission. And that particular number is 82 cases per 100,000 over a seven-day period. I want to note that there's a clear, there's a definite difference in how the CDC calculates incidence rates and how the State Department of Health calculates incidence rate. State Department of Health calculates it over a 14-day period, whereas the CDC calculates it over a seven-day period, and that explains in part, at least, why there's a different number. So, we're hopeful that while we have seen a significant increase in the past number of weeks, that it's, we're starting to see a plateau, and so we'll be continuing to watch that very closely. So I also want to talk about contact tracing. The Health District, obviously with this increase in case count prevalence, has had, has had to ramp up our contact tracing. Over the summer, things were really pretty slow in that regard. But now, as a result, we've had to activate additional staff. We continue to investigate every single positive case that falls within the Eastern Highlands Health District, and as I said, as of the last full week, that was 52 cases. I just want to talk briefly about the University of Connecticut. It impacts more directly Mansfield, but certainly the population has implications for the entire area. As everybody knows, or if you haven't already heard, the university's mandated vaccinations for all in-person learning. So students have to demonstrate that they're fully vaccinated, or, or receive either a medical or non-medical exemption. That is also now true for faculty and staff at the university. Can't recall the date, but at some point in October, all staff and faculty need to demonstrate fully vaccinated staff status, or, or, or receive medical or non-medical exemption. It's also noteworthy that the Health District is supporting the university's efforts to fully vaccinate all students, or to facilitate vaccination of all students. The Health District staff and MRC volunteers are staffing two relatively large clinics during move-in weekend on campus to vaccinate those students who are showing up on campus unvaccinated. And those, those clinics are occurring this Friday and Saturday. The Health District continues to work closely with our schools, we've been in close communication with Dr. Willett and the other school districts. We're effectively gonna pick up where we left off with regards to the contact tracing partnership and, and technical support, which the Health District provides. We're also, the Health District will all be, also be supporting in some form or fashion continued efforts to get kids vaccinated, those that are currently eligible. And of course, when finally, the emergency youth authorization is extended, either for the Pfizer or Moderna vaccine, to those under the age of 12. Hopefully that will occur sometime in October, that timeframe is still uncertain, unfortunately. You probably know as much as I do, because I don't, I'm not seeing anything in, in, in many of the official sources on this. But hopefully it happens sooner rather than later, so we can begin to get the youngest of our communities vaccinated. Let's see, what else? I did already mention that you, regarding the executive order in the Town of, the Town of Mansfield, I can tell you that all the municipal, all the municipal buildings, best to my knowledge, I believe, have all instituted policies similar to that, and that implemented by Lisa Hancock and her staff for the Town of Talon. It's also, I think, appropriate for us to mention, for me to mention, that the Health District fully supports and recommends that, that indoor masking occur during this, during this period of uptick of cases that we're currently experiencing both locally in Talon and in the Health District and statewide.
Rob?
Yep.
Lisa, the, the, the mandate that you put in place, it's all municipal buildings except the schools, correct?
That is correct, because there's a separate executive order from the governor that governs strictly for the schools. I have no jurisdiction with the schools. However, I will, will let and discuss the policy with him, just in case. Just to keep him apprised of what's going on, and I know he was going to make sure that all his staff was wearing masks and moving forward, but it's a separate jurisdiction.
All right, sorry, Rob, go ahead.
No problem. Just by way of overview of our vaccination campaign, over the past, what, nine months at this point in time, the Health District has administered almost 11,000 doses. About nine of the nine, about eight, about 800 of them have been to Talon residents. We've also been, we've also vaccinated, hosted two vaccine clinics at Talon High School for teachers, and we facilitated vaccine clinics at Talon schools for, for students during the end of this past, this past season. And I said, we're going to continue to support vaccination efforts of eligible students in, and moving forward this coming school year. The, the Health District also implemented a vaccination program for the homebound. We've done 44 patients or 46 patients to date. I believe two or three of those have been Talon residents, but that service continues to be available. Individuals can simply call our main office at 860-429-3325 and make the request, or they can go online to the state website, where they could fill out a form, and then the state will refer them to us directly. At some point in time, when those individuals become eligible for boosters, then the Health District will certainly support that too. We're also, boosters, as you may have heard, was announced by the federal government program to start sometime after September 20th. Health District is still kind of collecting information on what the state plan is in that regard. I know the governor has announced that all, that providers are waiting and available for when that does roll out. But for us, at least at local public health, we're still compiling information, we'll be evaluating our capacity to support that effort. We will be supporting it in some form or fashion, we're still trying to collect information to measure what we will be able to do. And then finally, the, and not finally, but the, the State Health Department has deployed something called Griffin Mobile Vaccination Units, perhaps you've seen some of those, and, and some of the other communities are basically yellow and blue minivans or SUVs with DPH logos all over them. The Health District, they've been made available to the Health District, they're supplementing and supporting our efforts to get vaccine into our community, we have leveraged that asset and deployed them, and deployed them actually to some special events, to, as pop-up clinic events. And then also, I wanted to mention that the Health District will be staffing a, a pop-up COVID vaccination clinic at Talon Day, I think is the name of the event, please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's called Talon Day. But you can expect to see the Eastern Highlands Health District at that event administering COVID-19 vaccine to anybody who wants it. And then, and then the last thing I wanted to speak to with regards to vaccination, with some of the vaccination rate numbers. The Town of Talon, for those who've received first doses, again, as of October 18th, was about 69%. That is, that is the winner among the Town of, Town of, the Eastern Highlands Health District member towns. And by comparison, at 66% is the entire state of Connecticut. That's for everybody's release, at least, received one dose. For those who are fully vaccinated, the Town of Talon is at 66% of the total population. Again, in comparison to the Connecticut totals, which is at 61, I'm sorry, 51, no, 61%, I stand corrected, 61%. Talon continues to be ahead of the curve relative to the statewide figures. And so with that, I know that we wanted to talk a little bit about masking indoor spaces, public settings, townwide, but before we go there, I'd be glad to answer any questions regarding the general update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hey, Rob, how are you? Thank you for being here tonight, good seeing you again.
Good seeing you.
Hopefully we won't have to see you much often, much more often after this. All right, so I have a bunch of questions. First one is, so you said that there was 52 cases that you're examining here within the Eastern Highland Health District, is that correct?
As of last week, ending or as reported on the, ending the 18th, the prior, during the prior seven days, we had 52 cases district-wide, yes.
And that covers how many towns?
10 towns, a population of 80,000.
So 52 cases out of 80,000 is what we have for COVID, COVID-19 positive, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, out of those, you have the numbers as far as how many hospitalizations out of those 52 cases?
Nope, but I could, I could get that information for you.
Yeah, if you could get that as far as current hospitalizations, and then as far as that is breakdown, as far as out of that hospitalizations, how many are ruleouts, how many are day outs, and how many are actually ICU beds?
That's information I'm not sure will be available to me. I could, I could, because my data set, the data that I have access to at the local public health level, I don't believe gets that granular. I don't believe gets that granular. We could, we could identify which ones are hospitalizations.
Well, I mean, just because hospitalizations, I mean, I've got friends that work in the hospital. They have hospitalizations where people are there. They come in for testing, but it's considered hospitalization. And then it's a ruleout, or that they're there for a day, they're treated. So I think it's a level, I mean, there's there's a conflation between hospitalization and level of hospitalization on some levels. And that's why I'm asking for the granularity on this, because that's something I know that the state does keep track of. And if it's something that you might be able to get access through the state on, because I think that is a lot, I mean, that that I think has a lot of information that could provide us where, you know, saying that you have 52 people in the hospital, but then their home a day or two later, there's a little bit of a difference as opposed to people that are there for a longer period of time in ICU treatment or something along those lines. So if that's something you might be able to get, I think that's something that would help me personally make a decision on this.
I could look into that.
Okay, thank you. Then you've already gone through the level of vaccination, vaccination. So Tallinn is 69% for one shot.
Yep.
And 66 for the full, full spectrum. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, how about within the Eastern Highland Health District, the the overall level?
Sure, so for for one dose, it's at 56% and for fully vaccinated, it's 53%. But I need to caveat and footnote those figures because 20% of that population within the Health District are University of Connecticut students, 16,000 of them. And right about the time that that age group became eligible for vaccine, the university released them all to their homes. And so so those that got vaccinated all went home and got vaccinated and then reported to their vaccine provider their home address and not their store's address. So so the numbers, overall numbers reflected, and there's no way really to kind of drill down to the data to figure out which ones are UConn students, which ones not. System is just not set up like that, unfortunately. So the numbers I cited you are are probably very low in terms of overall Health District population because of the university effect.
And then, so then the question is, is that full EHHD population of 80,000, does that also include the university students?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so with them coming in and now this, now the school mandating vaccination, that's gonna be, so now we are talking that our levels could be well up over 75, 80%.
I would, I would expect once all the students are in place and and their vaccination status has been determined, and in addition to that, all the university staff and faculty have been fully vaccinated sometime presumably in October, then then the Eastern Highland Health District's overall totals for vaccination rate coverage is going to be much higher. And certainly, the town of Mansfield's will be very high.
And so, and right now, that, you know, Tallinn is pretty much leading the state, it sounds like, as far as vaccination rate.
Well, I don't know about that. I can, in fact, I have, it's, it's high.
Above the average.
Yes, it's above the average, absolutely.
Right, so, but it's still with the, and just so I can get my, you know, wrap my head around is that, so we have 52 cases of a population of 80,000. And that we don't know what level of of infection it is. All we know is that there are 52 positive COVID-positive people within Eastern, within EHHD district. And that it's still a recommendation that there'd be masking or mandated masking across, across the board for everything?
That's correct. I think it's important to recognize that for every positive case, there are many more that are that are that are out there in the community that go unrecorded, undetected for a whole host of reasons. And so I think it's
You'd say the exact opposite as well, where for every people that, person that's vaccinated, that you have people that may have the resistance already or have caught it already and have already, and that are not vaccinated, choose not to get vaccinated, so along the same lines.
I'm not sure I followed you there.
Well, no, I mean, you're saying that either for every person that's, that's positive, that you don't know how many else are out there, that could also be positive, but not tracked, but along the same lines, that you could have the same people on the same, on the opposite side of it, you have people that aren't vaccinated, but have, you know, already have the built-in resistance and immunity and that, but they're not being tracked as well either, because there's no way to track them, because if they're choosing not to get the vaccine, then
Well, part of the, part of the problem with the current wave is it's being driven by the Delta variant. I'm sure we've all heard that, that term. And and the Delta variant is many times more infectious than than many of the original, many of the original COVID-19 viruses that were out there. And right now, we've got, and even those, even though, even those who have been exposed and have some level of natural immunity, still may be susceptible to the Delta variant. And so right now, you know, in terms of in terms of, I think, an appropriate public health position on this, there's about, you know, there's about 35% of the population within the town of Tallinn. And more importantly, you know, maybe, you know, 40% of the population within the entire Health District that is not fully vaccinated. And that means there's quite a few people out there that are still susceptible, even if they have been exposed before. And that's a concern.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. You know, for me, anybody who's unvaccinated, like you said, is a concern. We need to come together as a community. Tallinn has shown many, many times whenever we've had a tragedy or other events that have impacted our community, that we come together to help this. Now, first, I wanted to ask, the percentage of vaccinated, is that for ages 12 and up? Is that percentage only for those who can be vaccinated?
The percentages I gave you were for the total population, including, including the, including the very young.
Excellent. So we can't get up to 100% right now, because under 12 cannot be vaccinated. So their population, so from my understanding, it's important to have multiple layers of mitigation. From my understanding, we need to be have as many people as we can be vaccinated. We need to do masking, washing hands, and social distancing, because none of these mitigation factors are 100% perfect. And when we layer them together, it helps fill up the holes. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. An individual mitigation effort or or initiative or or another way of characterizes, community intervention is imperfect. In, you know, it, for example, masking, the notion of, I know it's kind of hard for individuals to kind of wrap their heads around, you know, well, what's the point of masking if we're just going to take the mask off while we eat? Well, the the issue is, the issue is it's important to mask whenever you can, when all possible, while indoors, given the, given the uptick in rates that we're dealing with. Now, there may be sometimes when, you know, it's the masking is, you know, you got to be able to eat. It's, it's an important, essential function for the human body. And so there's a balance between interventions which can, which can intervene and and disrupt transmission and other normal and other routine daily functions. And so it's definitely a balance. And so with regards, just by way of example, masking is an effective mitigation measure. There are studies that show particularly, particularly masking in school settings can be effective. But it's also a balance. There are times when kids just can't mask, and so you, so you need to let that happen, so things can continue to operate at some level of normalcy, understanding that things are not as normal as we want them. I think we all want them to be normal now. But we still continue to have risks within our community. So so I know I've been a little wordy on this particular explanation, but but masking is just one community intervention or mitigation measure, which is intended, while not perfect, to reduce risk of transmission in a setting, whether it's a school setting or the community setting.
Thank you. Let me see what else I had here. You answered some of these questions. So and for masking, we really need both people, like if it was two people having a conversation in a closed setting, you know, close together, we really need both people masked to have the best opportunity for mitigation, correct?
Well, again, the recommendation is if you're indoors, if you're indoors, there's plenty of studies to show out there that that the risk of transmission increases significantly as compared to outdoor settings. And if you're alone in an office, then certainly, you know, it would be reasonable not to have to wear a mask. But if you got somebody walking in and you're going to be in a meeting in a relatively enclosed space, it would be reasonable to put the mask on.
Excellent, thank you. I had a few people ask me about home testing kits. I hadn't not heard anything about them. Have you heard anything? Can you give us any information?
Yep. So there's, there are a number of kits out there, I believe that the FDA has approved. From my perspective, there are kind of two types. Those which, in which they provide instruction on how to collect a specimen and then send the specimen out to a laboratory for analysis, and then you get a result back versus those which you collect a specimen and there's already an analyzer of some sort in the kit. You put, you put the specimen in the analyzer, and then it provides you a result there at the home pretty quickly. That's in distinctions important to us at local public health and state public health, because the, well, the ones that analyze a specimen at home are not reported. There's no way for us at the local or state health department to even know about them. And and so, so we're in favor of the ones that get sent off to certified laboratories, because the laboratories are obligated to report the result to local and state public health authorities. And then we, then we'll have that data as part of our data set in in our surveillance system for COVID-19. That being said, I don't want to necessarily discourage people from using the home kits. Information's important when you're trying to protect yourself, your kids, and your family. So so if the FDA has approved them, just be sure you're following the instructions.
Well, thank you. In Tallinn, we don't have Walgreens or CVS, you know, that normally do testing. Is at some point where you would recommend Tallinn get some sort of testing inside the community? Or do you believe that, you know, have, having the proximity to, you know, Coventry and Vernon is good enough for us?
Well, I would say that there are many more testing opportunities and resources beyond just the Walgreens and the CVS that the public could avail themselves of. Quest Laboratories, for example, has, has locations in Manchester and Vernon. Of course, there's Urgent Care in Ellington. And then there's some of the federally qualified health centers that also do COVID testing. All of these places will do testing at no cost. Some of them may require appointments, but many of, but I think all of them have, most, all of them usually have same-day appointments available. All of those sites are actually listed on our website, on the, on the front page of our website at www.ehhd.org.
Thank you. Let me see if I had anything else. Everything that I'm hearing here, I, if we come to a decision, the question of should we be masking indoors? You know, I'm all for it. If just one member of our community ends up sick and in the hospital, whether it's for one day or for seven days, that's too much for me. Someone who is losing educational time or losing work time, losing time with their family, and may end up having long-term, you know, health issues from this COVID, you know, we've had deaths, unfortunately, in Tallinn. My heart goes out to all those families and friends who have been impacted by this. I do not want to see anymore. And I think we should be doing everything that we can possible to help protect our community. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate all your answers.
No problem.
John?
And you're muted, by the way, John, just in case you're not even talking.
Here we go. Okay, do we have an idea? I think you said there were 54 folks in the, in the district that have tested positive? Is that the number?
For the week ending, August 18th, we had 52.
52, okay. And do we have an idea of those 52, do we know how many were vaccinated versus unvaccinated?
No, but I, but I can tell you that, and I could certainly look into that, but but I can tell you from the onset here that the vast majority of individuals who are positive are are unvaccinated. There have been certainly breakthrough cases. But I think the last, but I think the last numbers the state published were showing a pretty small percentage.
Okay, okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Hey, Rob. So, I agree, except for keep talking about those 52 people. Do you know how many of those people were the under 12 demographic that tested positive?
No, but let's see, bear with me here a second. We do have a but I can tell you for the past three months that 13% of those six to 15 years of age comprise our positive cases. And 4% comprise those under the age of five. So so probably, you know, below 15 and 15 and younger comprise about 16 or 17% of our total cases over the past three months.
Thank you. So now, you did mention that Eastern Highland Health District at this point recommends masking. Was there a point in the past year that you guys did not recommend masking? Is this a new or has this been a constant recommendation?
Well, we've been following, we've been following the information and the data provided by both the CDC and State Health Department, in particularly as it relates to the the Delta variant. The Delta variant unfortunately has kind of changed the game a little bit for us at, within professional public health circles because it's, because of its, you know, higher level of infectiousness, it's definitely posed, it's definitely has created an increase in risk. And that's reflected in the current wave, that's the state, that's, that's a reflection of the current wave this, this state is currently experiencing.
I understand completely. So it would be, just kind of back in, I think it was the May, the state dropped their mask mandate. Is that?
I think about then, yeah, I think, I think early June, maybe.
Okay, so now, since you're recommending masks again, when, what would we have, you know, what would the case numbers have to be for a second drop in mask mandating or recommendations from Eastern Highland Health?
Well, that's a good, that's, that's an excellent question. You know, the Health District really works very closely with Dr. Carter and Dr. Sosa at State Health Department and the epidemiology section, State Health Department, to provide us the expertise and support our efforts here at local public health and making those kinds of decisions. And so so since we don't have professional epidemiologists working for us here, we do heavily rely on both the CDC and State Health Department for that kind of technical support. So, so I couldn't, I'm not really in a position to answer that question. I know there are lots of variables involved in, 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 in making those kinds of public health judgments. So unfortunately, I'm sorry, I'm not, it's going to be a hard question to answer. I think I'm hopeful that that if this current wave actually starts to plateau and actually go down, then at some and also at the same time vaccination rates start to tick up. You know, once at some point, you know, there's going to be a, I think, a point that's reasonable in which we can in which public health professionals and epidemiologists can say, well, the risks of community transmission has substantially decreased. And so it's a reasonable time to consider backing off some of the COVID recommendations that are out there. Exactly what that is, it's hard to say.
Well, appreciate appreciate your answers. Thank you, Rob. I just had a thing through you to Rob Miller, just a couple of questions and actually one comment. This is a heads up for your website. The Vernon Quest Diagnostics is actually permanently closed, so that's actually.
Okay. We'll have to. I appreciate that. Well, we got that off the Quest website, so we'll make that correction. Thank you.
That it permanently closed and I can see it just recently that was verified that they closed on the 16th. One question was is I thought I read recently that's 94% of UConn students that are vaccinated either one dose or two. Is that is that accurate?
That is that aligns with the information I have, yes. Which is good news.
And when you mentioned the vaccine clinics, this sort of rolling my second question, I know I think our last meeting and the prior one, we did authorize some of our ARP funds to help support some of the clinics in Mansfield. Will will you foresee in the coming months, any additional requests for all the towns to kind of pool their resources potentially from ARP funds or other municipal funds to support the efforts of the health district?
Well, at this time, I have no plans to request additional funds. I need to caveat that with the notion that one things, one thing I've learned from this pandemic is that things can change very quickly. But at this point in time, we have no plans to request additional funds.
That's fair. Thank you. And then just one statistical question. I know we get usually weekly updates through the Public Safety Office. Can we break out the fully vaccinated population of fifty or forty-five to sixty-four? Is that due to higher risk or comorbidities? Or is is that is there any kind of logic behind having that breakout in the?
That's how this that's how the state of Connecticut breaks it out on their website.
Okay.
That's the data we have access to.
That's it for me. Thank you, Rob.
Yeah, one question. You would said in the last three months to Kurt's question that sixteen percent of those positive cases are for 15 and under, I think is what you said.
Yes.
Just take a numbers. Can you give us the age breakdown of the percentages of the positives? I'm sorry, of the.
Sure. Yep. For six, so for for zero to five, it's four percent. And from six to 15, it's 13% for the past three months.
Okay, do we do we have like a forty-five to sixty-five, what those percentages are?
Yep. And it's it's in the weekly report that was just referenced a few months ago, a few seconds, a few minutes ago on the second page, which we do provide. But for the purposes of this discussion, for 16 to 25 years of age, it's eighteen percent. For 26 to 35 years of age, it's 16%. For 36 to 45, it's 14. For 46 to 55, it's 15. For 56 to 65, it's 10. For 66 to 75, it's eight. And for 676 and older, it's four.
And what's the total total positives that that encompasses?
Well, it's 100% of the positives, which we've had in the health district. I don't. I don't have that. I don't have that exact number.
Okay.
All we have is the Connecticut cumulative cases, although actually no, we have cumulative cases. Five thousand and four for cumulative cases for the total Highland Health District.
Yeah, that's but that's since the start of the pandemic, not just the past three months.
And the the numbers that you just referenced on page two have since March also. So we don't have the breakdown here of the past three months to kind of compare apples.
We can get that for you.
Okay, that'd be useful.
That's all I have. Thanks, Rob.
Anybody else have anything? So my only concern on this, Rob, has been mentioned a couple of times here is the the back and forth. I've seen some towns indoor mask mandate because we're at high and then it goes down to low. So I'm concerned the back and forth for the public. You know, up and down. When is it? When isn't it?
Yeah, sure. I I agree. It's 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 a messaging challenge. It can be confusing to the general public. From my perspective, you know, it's it's resulting or potentially resulting in a patchwork of of precautions from one community to the next, which obviously can it's how can how can the general population kind of be expected to keep track of all that? It's not. Excuse me?
It's not like we all live within just the Tallinn borders.
Absolutely.
One here or there, you know, going out of state, whatever you're doing is if I personally do not like the abdication of the responsibility at the state level. You're getting it down to a town level and that would assume that you're never leaving Tallinn for. One case back out of this color and into that color or adding this color and that color is it's a logistics nightmare.
I can. I agree. I can tell you that I and my colleagues, members of the Connecticut Association of Directors of Health share that view that that precaution of this nature would have been more effective if implemented statewide.
Lou, you said you had some general questions?
Yeah, just so while while we were talking about some of these things, I checked out the the provisions that that Rob talked about as far as the legal issues and that it was actually the section that they cite is twenty-eight dash eight A of the Connecticut General Statute deal with the the powers of municipal chief executive officers during emergencies. Question that I have is, are we still as a town operating under a declaration of emergency? Or because I thought that we needed to renew that every.
I think the last time we did it, we said we were going to have it be coinciding with the governors, which.
Well, so that means that.
And until further revoked by the town council.
Yeah.
All right, because then that's where that that's where twenty-eight eight twenty-eight dash eight A gets involved as far as the the ability where if we're still operating underneath that, that's where some issue could be. But I would still respectfully request that there's a if you refer this over to our town council or town attorney, have a just a full legal opinion on the executive order so we can know where we stand as far as the authority of, you know, not on not not on not on under, you know, trying to overlook or anything.
I certainly have no issue if the town council would like to make a decision regarding the mask mandate. I did it because I was being advised that it was the right thing to do. But certainly, if the town council wants to make a decision and just ask me to do whatever you want me to do, I don't have an issue with that.
But I'm and I don't mean that at all. I mean, it's just I need to know, you know, I want to see where the where we stand on the legality of everything here so that we know for ourselves as far as where we stand on on the footing in accordance with the executive order. So.
Yeah, and my struggle with it, Lisa, as I've mentioned to you and as I just mentioned to Rob, is just the volatility of it. You could literally, this report comes out one day, you have one more, one less, it drops you from orange back to yellow. We were just yelling. Right. Well, that's the problem, right? So you say to the businesses, oh, today, everybody's going to wear a mask. And it was, oh, nope, we're good now, you know?
One of the other things, too, that I was at, I participated in a meeting with CROG and also the Southeast Region COG had a meeting and they all voted to try to be consistent within their jurisdictions and everyone to have the same decision on masking in buildings, masking in restaurants, things as such, businesses. And they took a unified approach in the Southern COG. CROG was also requesting that from its membership, as well as they both generated a letter to the governor requesting him to be the one who would do a state one way or the other, rather than leaving it upon each jurisdiction. So there's there's a lot of motion going on out there and discussions by the various regions of the state. And I think the majority of them all felt that they wish the governor had just done it.
Yeah, look at the state numbers.
But I can certainly get the legal opinion. I'll reach out to Rick and ask him to review the legislation and I have no issue either way.
Yeah. Brenda?
Thank you. I want to make the point that requiring masks inside buildings in Tallinn would be protecting the workers. It would be protecting the people at the grocery store. It would be protecting those people who serve us food. It would be protecting the people in the hardware store and at the gas station who we rely on for, you know, obviously very important services and products. You know, we can't live without our grocery stores or, you know, and all those others that are mentioned. I think that we've heard from many authorities that masking indoors is the appropriate thing to do. Waiting for a legal opinion when it's obvious that other towns are going forward with this and that we're receiving the recommendation, again, from a number of different authorities, waiting on this is just means that we're allowing more people to get sick or be exposed. We're allowing more people to worry about their safety when they have to go to work. You know, we're taking the people who are on the front lines and putting their safety at risk. I say we step forward and we be a leader in this in protecting those who are working in Tallinn and who are providing services to our residents and put forward a mask mandate inside of town. Again, it's protecting those who are most important to us. Even just protecting, you know, one more person from falling seriously ill or worse is worth it for me. And I think that trying to tell other people what their level of what percentage or what numbers they should be working at, it would be unfortunate. I think we have to understand that everybody has different levels of comfort. So my recommendation, Lisa, is to go ahead with the mask mandate and I encourage you to do that as soon as possible. Thank you.
Two questions and a comment. So to you, my mentor, to Rob Miller. I know I asked earlier about the ninety-four percent for UConn students. Has the health district or the state had any concerns about a spike in in positive cases, whether it's a Delta variant or the main COVID virus in relation to that movement that's coming up this weekend or even this return to school after the Labor Day weekend holiday?
Well, I can tell you that that any material movement of people in a population during a pandemic is a concern. And so so certainly certainly with the influx of, you know, thousands of new individuals coming into our our area, that that is a concern. That being said, you know, you have to, we have to obviously reconcile that with the ninety-four percent figure. You know, some public health professionals will ninety-four percent is herd immunity. And so and so while that number is very good, I think to be kind of responsible public health officials, we still have to watch very closely the movement of this many people at a very short period of time during a pandemic of this of this nature. I hope that answered your question.
And then just another question. I know you're obviously meeting with us tonight. Have any other towns in the health district reached out for similar guidance or having you attend their meetings to kind of help either their schools or their selectmen or their managers?
Yep. So I, yes, I've had individual conversations with some some for selectmen. The town of Mansfield, I their council I meet with at a greater frequency. And and they're they consistently consult with me on these kinds of issues. I can't tell you, though, that the timing just worked out. I was happened to be out of state at the time that they made that decision. But I do support the decision. But as for the other kind of larger community within our jurisdiction, the town of Coventry, I have not had specific conversation on this matter with the with the town manager. But I do know that he has imposed some operating policies, which has reinstituted masking masking in municipal buildings.
Okay, thank you. Actually, that just made me think of one other question in regards to Mansfield's mandate. Is that in effect through kind of the governor's executive order through September 30th comparable to I believe our town's current mandate for town buildings is effective through 30th of release?
Yeah, so I'm I'm not sure. I can certainly find out, like I said, the a copy of the the copy of the I can certainly provide a copy of the order. I do know and the councilman made a good point regarding a state of emergency declared within a municipality. I do know that Mansfield does have theirs in place and that that was in part the authority upon which Ryan issued it. When their state of emergency ends, I'm not sure. It would make sense for it to end at the same time the states does. But I'll make sure that that Lisa gets a copy of the order so you have it.
Thank you. And then I think just a general comment, you're all good, Rob. I think just a general comment on the discussion is my lean would be to encourage Lisa to provide a mask mandate if we are concerned. And I think if there's a certain level of uniformity, I think that's my greater concern is just like Chairman Nucci was saying, the changes in raids and how we color code ourselves. I think there's also a concern of if other towns are or not doing it, it kind of creates that odd situation of almost like different states. When you travel to one state, you have to be prepared for their regulations and mandate. The town. So I strongly encourage whatever route you ultimately take, we're kind of in compliance or we're kind of working together as a health district and neighbors. I believe there's one or two towns, Rob, that kind of border Tallinn but aren't part of the health district. Is that correct? And Ellington and like she might just be. Yeah, Vernon Ellington and this. Yeah.
Yeah, they're part of the North Central District Department of Health. Patrice Sulik, my colleague, is their director. And before we forget, there is another neighbor that has imposed such a mandate, and that's Manchester.
Thank you. So yeah, I guess that we just summarize my comments is that also here for maybe that health district, I think in general, it's we don't want our situation where it's just you cross the town border and suddenly there's a little bit of different regulations. So whatever action we take, I think that we should err on the side of caution and public safety, but also ensure that we're having communication agreement amongst members of the health district.
I'd like to strongly say, too, you know, I believe that businesses have the right at any point to mandate masks. That is their right for no shirt, no shoes, no service. So if they're they want to implement a mask mandate that is 100% within their right to do. And I feel like the majority of employers are going to err on the side of caution. And I feel like the majority of employers are going to err on the side of caution and decide what they want to do for their, their workers and for the people that frequent their establishment. So, you know, I, I put a lot of faith in the fact that, that people are going to do the right thing. And businesses will make the decisions that's, that's right for them also. So Steve had said, as I said, as we've heard, you know, I just have concerns with the whole border thing. If, if we don't have some kind of uniformity, then it's like, it doesn't matter. Because we're going other places. We're bringing it back every which way we go, you know, so there, there is no bubble that we're living in here. Which is why this, you know, the governor has made this extraordinarily difficult for every town to go through this to try to figure out what's best for their individual population within the individual borders of their towns, notwithstanding I don't work in town, I don't shop in town, my kid doesn't go to school in town, you know, gymnastics isn't in town. I've got a travel soccer kid. I'm going to Maine, I'm going here and there, you know, everywhere I go, it's totally different. It's frustrating that there's not more leadership at the, the higher level for the state. On, on how to apply the numbers and the volatility of the numbers. Because it's going to be a red light, green light game from growing up, you know, red, nope, stop, nope, go, you know, and it's that's not going to do anything except cause frustration through our residents. And it's going to cause more divert, like more angst among people of what they do and what they don't. So, um, I'm not in favor of putting a mandate in right now. I don't feel like we have enough information to make that decision. And I don't feel like us being an island of towns around that are doing or not doing without having a solid. If we have to do this, then we need to establish when it's on, when it's off. And I don't feel like we've gotten that guidance from anybody yet and how to determine what would be our red light, green light at this point. That's, that's where I am on it right now. And I would say, if anything, at the very minimum, I would say we should do a communication to the local businesses in town to watch the, watch the rate, the, the red, orange, yellow and all that other stuff and to please take action as you see fit for mandating masks in your establishment. But that's, that's my, my two cents on the matter. John?
And that's exactly where I am too, because six months ago, a year ago, it was all masks all the time. Everybody knew it. Everybody had their masks on and, and everybody knew what the rules were. If we start trying to piecemeal this thing town by town, I, all I can see is frustration and confusion. I say leave it up to these individual establishments. I, I work in, in the healthcare industry. If I walk into a building, there, there sometimes there'll be a sign on the door that says you have to wear a mask to come in here. So I'll put a mask on. I think it's up to these individual businesses and entities to make the decisions for themselves. I'm, I'm definitely not in favor of a townwide mask mandate. I think that all that's going to do is just cause confusion for people.
Thank you. Brenda? Thank you. I'm sorry.
I, I don't see any difference in having each town decide what's best for them. And having each business decide what's best for them. We're a town. We, we should be coming together to protect our community. Protect the people who work here and putting a mask mandate in, in place is the right thing to do. It is not hard to carry a mask, just like Mr. Reagan said, you, you carry a mask if you see on the door it says to wear one. You take it out of your pocket, you take it out of your purse, you put it on and you conduct your business. I, I want to protect talent. I want to protect the residents, especially those who are most vulnerable. Who cannot be vaccinated, whose vaccination may not work to full capacity. And for our workers. I, I, I can't see any other right path, the right way to go forward. We're hearing from the experts what their opinion, what their expert opinion is based on years of experience, based on what they've seen in this pandemic. Six months ago, we didn't need to see, have people wearing masks because our numbers were way lower. Let's put the masks on. Let's protect our community. Let these numbers down.
Thank you.
I, I think you already kind of covered part of what I was going to say, Chair Nuccio, but I would encourage if, if the majority of the council isn't in favor of having the town manager execute a mandate, I do, I would strongly encourage some sort of communication, especially leading up to the moving weekend to encourage businesses to strongly encourage wearing of masks when possible. I think also in light of that, while we do know that 94% of students are vaccinated. Not all students move in solely. They come, they come with parents and we don't track and contact trace their status. So just another point of consideration as we move forward. But I would agree if, if the majority of the council isn't in favor of directing the town manager to have a mask mandate, that this is that a communication you sent out relative to those changing situations and, and strongly encourage businesses to also encourage mask wearing. Or, or to, you know, maintain businesses unless it's a needing establishment and the quick business, you know, whenever I go in the grocery store, usually it's quick in and out. I kind of know what I'm doing and not lounging around if I need to, same thing at the library or any other public building. Usually just kind of in and out. I got anything to do when I head home. At least at this point.
I agree. Thank you. Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree wholeheartedly with your comments. I think it's something that if, that we need to take a look at, but I, I, I think that my biggest issue is that 52 out of 80,000. That's a significant number for me. And while I appreciate Ms. Flusie's statements that there's also personal agency and that people can, if they feel that they are at risk, they can take steps to protect themselves. That, but that for us to force people to do certain things that, that if you are concerned, you can take agency, you can take specific precautions that you need. I'm at risk. I have certain comorbidities. My son has certain comorbidities. Where everyone's at at risk. We take the necessary precautions for ourselves. That being said, I'm not going to force somebody else to make that decision when I can make my own decision as far as whether I'm going to someplace to, to, to a certain business or not, whether I'm not going to wear a mask. 99% of the time I don't wear a mask. Because I accept that responsibility. I accept that agency that I have on it. That I, the, the other issue that I have is that as the numbers are going down that the threshold, as we've seen, it's a matter of one or two people that could jump us up from red to green to yellow to whatever it is. And as those numbers go, continue to go down, it'll be even more drastic. When we had a number where 10% of 1,000 people is significant. 10% of 100 people is much less. 10% of 10 people, that's one person. So out of 52 people with, you know, in the entire district increasingly by 10%, that means that all we need is five people more to test positive with near and then the whole, and then it goes up again. So I think that as we're going down, as the numbers are going down, I really have a hard time mandating people do this. I think I would agree that we strongly suggest businesses assess themselves and determine on their own whether or not that's something that they want to do for their business. I think that's something that we could do. I think that we could put our messages to our, to our population saying, look, we strongly suggest that people consider getting vaccinated, vaccinated. That we've done the best we can, but to mandate anything like that, I'm, I'm against it. And, and that's, that's where I stand right now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Brenda?
For those one, two, three or four or five people who would bring us above a threshold to their, them and their family members, it is a big deal. It's, it's, it's remarkable what this, what this pandemic can, what this disease can do to people. You shouldn't be, I don't believe we should be reducing this to statistic. Each one of those numbers is a person. It's a family. It's a classroom. It's a business. It, it, it has far reaches into our community. Each one of those numbers is a person. Lisa, please listen to the experts and not people's personal opinions. And please listen to the experts when you weigh on whether we should be masking or not for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a pretty easy one for me. There's no need, no reason to mandate anything from the town level. We've been living in a pandemic just with COVID for 18 months, going on 18 months now. People know the information. They know how to make their decisions. Businesses and communities and individuals make these decisions on a regular basis. Not having a mandate does not preclude you from wearing a mask at any point, anytime, anywhere. Does not preclude you from staying at home or not going out. There's no need, it's unacceptable that we're even considering putting in a mandate for people to wear masks. It's not our role. It's people at this point in this pandemic, people make their own decisions. Every adult has had the opportunity to get vaccinated. If they choose not to get vaccinated and, and not wear a mask, that is on them. And they, they know the risk. They make their decisions. It is not on our, it's not for us to make this a mandate. That's all I ask.
Thank you. All right. Steve?
Just one quick question is for, I kind of obviously a poor order, but my clarification for the agenda item myself, there's no actions desired. So at this point, really, we're just kind of having a discussion. If there was any consideration, you would have to go on a future agenda through a future regular meeting or a special meeting to direct the town manager to any mandate, or is that something we're still trying to get legal clarification on?
You wanted legal clarification? Yeah.
Okay.
So from my understanding, it's my authority to do it, but certainly I want to take an ear of what everyone has to say. And certainly of the public who shares to share as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. That covered it for me.
Good. Uh, not good, but good.
Yeah, there's a lot of questions that still need to be answered, but I appreciate all the information that Lisa and Rob have been able to provide and it's definitely still a lot to deliberate on, but I think most counselors have already expressed their opinions pretty, pretty clearly, so.
I think we have discussed. Um, all right. With that, we're going to move on to 8.4. Discussion to set up a joint workshop with the Historic District Commission, Commission on People with Disabilities and Town Council to evaluate the feasibility and potential cost of an ADA improvement to historic sidewalks. A little bit of background on this one is we have had, uh, in the past, we've had a couple of meetings where we have talked about the ADA accessibility to the green, uh, which is a major furaway to the post office, to facilities down to the bus station, et cetera, et cetera. And making sure that specifically the green is our slate are not ADA accessible right now. We've had a couple of meetings. We had the walk along on the, on the green. We had discussions about possible grant opportunities and how all this kind of circled back around grant opportunities, but we can't really apply for grant opportunities until we know exactly what we want to do and we can't say exactly what we're going to do until we discuss it and sit down and talk to an engineer to say, would this work? Would that work? There's a lot of opinions that we have to consider here and balance because our green is a historic district. Is it actually a nationally registered historic district? So we can't just kind of steamroll through and say, we're going to put in regular concrete sidewalks. We have to balance the historic district, the, um, the desires of them along with the, the the fact that in all, we need to make the green accessible to everybody. You know, from the perspective of inclusion and accessibility. I've heard from so many people in our community that cannot walk the green or have gotten hurt on the green or have a wheelchair and can't be on the green. And it's just the right thing to do to look at trying to make the green accessible for everyone. So in order to do that, I have all the notes and such from the meetings that, from the green walk. And a couple other things. We have Walter here from the Commission on People with Disabilities. He spoke earlier. And we definitely have opinions on the historic district. So I thought for this piece here, it would make most sense for all of us to discuss doing a joint workshop with all of the parties, all the interested parties to kind of listen, to hear what everybody wants. And then we have to have a conversation on what we're willing to put into, um, the budget to think about. Even if it's just at this point, the engineering piece of it, to say, this is what we would like to do. Here is the initial cost for it. This is then going to enable us to go for grants. And from my understanding, there's grants at the state level. There's also grants at the federal level because we are a federally recognized historic district. So, um, this was basically discussion to see how everybody felt about setting up a joint workshop with those areas. To kind of take a step forward now and actually go forward with a project to make the green accessible. My chair?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I shall recognize Walter Gollum is here and thank you for waiting so long. I wish we probably could have new agenda item up proactively, but appreciate your patience. And you did speak in favor of it. I was going to recommend perhaps we allow Mr. Gollum, if they are willing to sit at the table, uh, to speak if there are any questions directed through you to, to him as the chair of the commission. Just general comments though, I'm absolutely in favor of having a joint workshop in a public session, things somewhat to this where it's kind of a, or like tomorrow's meeting, that'll be kind of a joint hybrid style meeting between the three groups. I think that would allow both the capacity and the interaction. One question I would have is if we were to go forward with the project, and this might be a question for the workshop. How much planning would we need if it was a capital improvement project for it to go through either this budget cycle or, or a subsequent budget cycle if it, if it even fell under that category of spending?
We'll probably, Lisa, hand up. We'll probably be beginning the capital improvement program work, budget, projections and such, starting in September, early October. So there's not really a lot of time to move forward with it. Certainly if we did have a workshop quickly and we had some ideas of which way we wanted to go, I maybe ever would get some engineering money to try to get some estimates. We may be able to get it into the program in time to at least propose it.
For, for an out here kind of thing like if you need two, three, four.
Going to depend on the cost and, and as well as what the council is willing to put out for the future as far as the total cost or, or something like that. This could be something very significant. I know years ago, we were talking about sidewalks on the green and it, this was several years ago, even rather than most recently. And I know it just ended up going nowhere. So at this point, I, I don't really want to be throwing good money after uncertain projects where, you know, I'd rather have a good idea of where you want to head. And then we try to get some estimates to say, okay, sidewalks are going to be two, $3 million. Is that something you're willing to stand behind to do? And if you are, then we put it in the plan. We try to figure out how we fund it and we go from there. If that's something that you don't even want to consider, then it's probably not worth the money to be trying to estimate anything to go forward. So certainly if, if we have a workshop soon, then it may be something we could try to at least get some preliminary estimates. I mean, you'd have to go through a complete design and everything else depending on what method you're thinking of doing. It could have the engineer look at it, but I just want to wait and get an idea of what you want.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think that's the, that's kind of where we keep getting stuck in this catch 22. Like we, we need to have an engineer look at it. So we can discuss options and see what it is. Cause like, for instance, Wellington this year just got a steep grant for a million dollars for sidewalks. So there's opportunity out there for us to get grant funding for this. But all of that grant funding application requires a project. You know, and, and we can't do a project plan without having an engineer look at it. So I feel like we just kind of keep cycling through and I want to push through to the, let's, let's get let's get what we need to at least start the process.
So at the very least, I'm sorry. At the very least, what we could do for the capital plan is maybe put some money in for an engineering ideas, engineering ideas, or, you know, certainly I could try to find out now, what's the cost? Can we do it under our current budget of what we have to say? Do we want to put us a new sidewalk in, but similar to a historical it's not the same materials. Do we want to just throw in new sidewalks? Things, things like that. Or do we want to do nothing? But, you know, I can ask him, what are some of the alternatives? And what would it cost to get ideas to move forward? And if there's, you know, it's only a few thousand dollars, we could probably do something in our current budget, but if it's $50,000 or a hundred thousand, that's certainly something that'll have to go into the capital program.
Right. And the capital not recurring, the, the money that the that we have there.
Yeah, certainly. It depends on Yeah, certainly. It depends on which toy you want it up.
I just had one other comp or question or potential comment, and then I want to make sure that Walter is recognized. And I see that it's listed as Annalee Hughes, I guess, that's probably Susan Hughes. That's her hand raised. I don't know if we're allowing other members to speak, or is only the chair?
Other than probably just Walter.
Okay, so I should make that clear, clear, but just one other thought, if we went forward to workshop. Depending on the size and scope and cost of the project, would it potentially fall after being a referendum question? Which in the past, certain referendum projects then kind of provide more ease and accessibility to receive grants that offset the costs. And there to the geothermal or library or school projects that we've had in the past.
Certainly, if the, if the program does whatever you decide that you'd like to do. If it's millions of dollars, then more than likely it would have to go to a referendum ballot. And then that takes a lot more tap and timing. That, you know, that right now would be too late to put it on the web, but that was something.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking, I was expecting you that fast, but just as a general procedural matter, just, just kind of clear expectations when we have a workshop, what, what avenues we have available to us. But with that being said, I wanted to give Walter the opportunity to speak.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Lisa. I want to question us about even saying the word sidewalk at this stage. It's my impression, by the way, I just background. In my former life, I, I was an engineer. I'm trained as an engineer. I spent three decades doing that. And you know, although this isn't my area, I know enough to know that I'm reasonably sure that none of us know what we're talking about yet. And, and, and I get nervous when I even hear people say the word sidewalk because I don't know, okay? So my, my, my main point tonight is that this workshop, let's please somehow inject some real expertise in there. And it's probably people we don't know, okay? It's nobody in town, okay? There are folks out there who are experts at making historical sites accessible and maintaining the character, okay? The US Department of the Interior, but you know, my job, you guys, well, you know, my day job is, is a federal thing here in the state. The US Department of the Interior, you know, which is the owner of the natural historic districts and all that good stuff is very clear on this, you know, that, that a historic site is not except for the ADA, okay, period, okay? They must be made accessible in a way that maintains historic character, blah, blah, blah. And this has been going on for decades, you know, and there are people out there who know how to do it. There's expertise in how you maintain the character, how you maintain the old stone, whatever, okay? And I love history, by the way, you know, I, I'm living across the street right now. So, you know, the green is wonderful place to me. And I'd like to see, well, I'd like to see it be what it is, right? So what I hope we can do in this workshop is have it more than just us folks here in college. You know, the disability commission and the, the historic commission coming together and exchanging views, whatever that might look like. And have somebody there who's an expert on this. Go to a university, go to an engineering firm, get someone will come and talk to us. We don't have to pack. There's people who will come and give us a half an hour or whatever, maybe sit on a panel and educate us. And it might be somebody in Hartford, in state government, you know, we'll see. But this is what, what I'm hoping that whatever we do in this workshop, we inject some new knowledge in there so that we all get smarter about what the options are, you know? For those of us who are concerned about accessibility, you know, what does that look like, right? If there's, there's lots of different, there may, there are different ways to do this. And you know, before we start presuming about how long it's going to take or what it's going to cost, what it's going to look like, let's get some expertise. And let's, let's have some faith that it's going to be some happy medium, you know, where we're going to have the green looking just like it does today, but somehow magically become accessible. I mean, I'm an, I'm an engineer, I'm a tech guy. So, you know, I'm a big believer in finding the technology that's going to make things work. But we need to hear from some experts on how to do that. So what my suggestion is that this workshop be the first step in bringing in some experts. Who, you know, I'm willing to bet we can get folks who are volunteers, certainly university folks, to come and talk to us about what the technologies are. So that we can start to have a meaningful discussion. And then I do think it makes sense to have a placeholder in the budget for some preliminary engineering study. You know, my guess is that the magnitude of what we're looking at potentially, this isn't going to happen overnight, you know? And you know, there's a, there's, when you do things at the scale, you know, there's preliminary concept study, and then there's another preliminary design, and then there's a final design and blah, blah, blah. So on and go. So you know, you kind of ratchet it up. So I would imagine you could put a placeholder in the budget. Have a few dollars in there for some preliminary engineering study that would be informed by what we learned in this workshop. That will put us in a position to actually think about then funding the actual engineering design work that would have to be the basis for grant application. But this is one of the issues we had months ago when we started talking about this is, you know, we were somehow, you know, staring at a deadline for a state grant application. With nothing on the tape, right? And that, you know, I wish, I wish things would happen like that, but they don't, right? So, yeah, so we talked about this at the meeting the other night and I, I really, I, I like the idea of the workshop. But let's make sure that it is infused with some outside expertise that will help us understand the issue better, help us who have different stakeholders involved here communicate a little better about what the options are.
So do you mind if I ask you then, Walter, I've already done what you have here, US Department of Interior, universities, engineering firm and state government.
Right.
We can make some really, some, you know, some reach of, reach outs to people to start with. But do you have any suggestions for contacts to specifically reach out to from any of those areas?
I'm prepared, I'm prepared to do some of that and get back to you. I mean, I, you know, I will talk to some folks at the state. And I'll talk to some folks at UConn and then we'll go from there. I know that there's some other towns and I mean, we're not the only historic district in Connecticut, right? I mean, there's a lot of beautiful old town and downtown urban areas. Westport's done some interesting work, you know, now of course, you know, we don't have their grand list. But nevertheless, you know, there are folks around Connecticut, never mind around New England, who have done this kind of thing. So what I would, what I will do in the next few weeks is I'll reach out to some of these folks at some of the other towns where I know have done work. You know, they've got paving stones or I don't know. You've ever seen one of these things taken out of the ground? They're not flystones. They're boulders that are flat.
And they're fragile.
Yeah, these are.
They're brittle.
They go.
These are big, these are big things, so. You know, so I, you know, I have faith that we can find some folks who have been down this path, who know who the experts are, who might be able to get us folks to come in and give us a little bit of time, especially now with Zoom, you know, it's so much easier to get, you know, people to, I mean, they'll do it as a market, if it's a firm, they'll do it as a market, at market expense. If it's university, they can do it, you know, for their, for their resume, so. Yeah, I'll, I'll check with UConn, I'll check with the state, I'll check with Westport and a couple other places and then I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Oh yeah, of course, at least I'm sorry.
Yes, I, I'd like to, if, if we can, like, I'd like to try to get something on our schedule as soon as we can within like the next month if possible to have.
So I understand because if we're going to put something in the budget.
Right, we have the budgetary constraints, so I would definitely like to get this as, and if there's anything that I can do to help any, anybody that I can call also, if you want to give me some names, I can make some.
I can do that. I'll get back to both of you within the next week, you know, to start doing some more.
Just one other, one other comment too, is someone that you might want to reach out to, just while it's in my mind fresh is the conservation commission when they were designing Wonnit, they worked with, I think, the UConn. I think it's architecture and landscape design. I know it's not entirely, you know, in relation to kind of municipal or town level projects, but they might have some insight or resources there. So I care about all the professors named, but they, since they've kind of provided volunteer services with their students, they might be a similar resource that would provide kind of a lower, low cost competition.
There's a few organizations around New England. I mean, gosh, we have Boston. I mean, you know, you've got some, some serious historic sites around here that have had this kind of work done. So I don't think it'll be too difficult to get, to get some names. I'll talk to Bob and, and see who they talk to.
Perfect. I think that's exactly what we need then. So we'll be looking to, to hear back from you and then we can move forward with setting something up to try to get something that we can build into the budget. Right, perfect. Thank you very much.
Simple.
Yeah, you can leave now if you want, you know, you've been sitting here all night for that, so. We're, we're just riveting people up here, you know? Thank you very much, Walter. All right, now we're going to go on to eight dot five. Consideration of a resolution authorizing Lisa Hancock temporary town manager to execute a memorandum of agreement with the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection for participation in the homeland security grant program. This action modifies language in resolution nineteen dot fifty seven by updating the town manager's name to reflect Lisa Hancock appointment as temporary town manager. So Lisa, I believe we're just changing it.
This one is for under John Lightell for his emergency national grant. So it just allows me to be a resign for the funding request and so forth.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on this? No? All right.
All right, Steve, I think a motion that be resolved, the town council may enter into with and deliver to the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Homeland Security any and all documents which it deems be necessary or appropriate and further resolved that Lisa Hancock as temporary town manager of the town. Tom is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town council and to do and perform all acts and things which he or she, shall I say, deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. As I further certifies that Lisa Hancock now holds the office of temporary manager, town manager, and that she has held that office since August sixth, twenty twenty one, approved by the town town council on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one.
Wonderful, say a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
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 Bill?
Hi.
I'm an I, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. That gets us up to eight dot six, estimated year end financial update. So Lisa, this is weird. So you get to play both of them.
I think the raid hour, I think I'm going to try to go over through this quickly and certainly if you have any questions whatsoever, keep them to a minimum.
So I should just.
I'm kidding with you.
Lisa and I have this, this like.
And I am just teasing.
She's like.
I am teasing. And I hope that wasn't offensive to anybody. I'm just. So right now we're, we're in the depth of trying to close out the year, get all our final numbers, all our final accruals in place. The auditors have come in and start doing some preliminary work for us, so we're, we're in the gist of everything. What I decided to do was just to give you a snapshot of where we are at the moment. We're still paying some final accounts payable and, and things like that. But a majority of the items have at least gotten to place. We're still having to do one more revenue accrual, which we won't have that number until August is closed under tax collections. So we did the best we could. The, right now, if, if you look at the numbers that I've included this evening, the projection is to have a, is she locked down? The projection is to have about a five hundred and seventy four thousand dollar increase to fund balance. That would bring the fund balance at June to about ten and a half million, ten point six million in that, that range. There's so much that contributes to a lot of that and the big portion, I can go through some of the revenues if you'd like, or would you rather me just go over the spreadsheet?
I would give her the spreadsheet, probably as a little summary.
I'm going to let y'all decide because like, you know, I could get lost in this forever.
All right. Well, basically right now with, with the actuals of where we're at, the the amount compared to the revised budget is almost a seven hundred thousand dollar shortfall in revenues. Don't let that alarm you that mainly is due to the additional appropriation, supplemental appropriations that you put in place for the board of education, for their COVID fund, for the fire truck, for the one percent fund. So that added to the use of fund balance and you will never see a revenue recorded for that, but certainly makes the budget to actual look like a shortfall. Where it really truly comes into play is your actual numbers. Here at your, hopefully Mike's getting that, at your revenues as of the snapshot, which was just a few days ago, we're almost at fifty seven point four million in actual revenues. Our actual expenditures are, oh, I don't have them added together, of course. Let's just say about fifty seven million. The, the net effect between revenues and expenditures is about a five hundred and seventy four thousand dollar increase to the fund balance based on these actuals. Now, if you look at the estimated column and we're still waiting to see what happens. The estimated, I just had, there's the adjustment in there for the taxes based on the ruling, the accrual that we may have to put in. I did my best estimate with that. So it'll bring the revenues of, to a little more of a shortfall once that adjustment is in place, if, if it comes to fruition. The expenditure side, the big difference here reflects the board of education at spending one hundred percent of their budget. As of the snapshot in time, the, the current numbers show that the board of it is going to turn back around almost eight hundred thousand dollars. The reason I show in the projection for June thirtieth of the whole amount being expended is because usually the board of education will come back and request for their one percent fund, for the COVID relief. And some, and then sometimes they turn some back, but just on a overall basis, I wanted to project it so that you would see the impact if, if they did take all that money back for in the future year. The impact on the fund balance would go from a positive to a reduction of about four hundred and forty thousand dollars, just with that assumption. Your financial report will still show an increase to fund balance, but the impact, what I'm trying to show out there is once you put those resolutions in place, if you so desire to do so, then the impact will actually show a negative. So that's what I was trying to reflect here. It could go either way. The town, we, we are turning back about four hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars. A lot of that has to do, a big chunk of it has to do with attrition and we had a lot of turnover this year. We had a lot of retirements. We had people moving from when somebody retired, moving from one department to another. And the time it took to fill those positions left those positions unfilled and people some savings resulting from that. However, we did use some of the savings for overtime for other people to try to pick up the slack of what we had to do. So a big chunk of that had to do with that. We also had some savings in the president trooper account. And, and then a lot of it just had to do with other savings here and there regarding their supplies, things like that. We didn't have to extend. As far as the board of education, I really cannot comment on where their savings resulted from. I'm sure some of it had to do with. Where their savings resulted from. I'm sure some of it had to do with, with COVID and maybe. Not implementing certain programs or, or what, but that would certainly be something from the superintendent to speak to. Regarding those savings.
And we'll be having a meeting on, on the COVID funds coming up, so we can definitely get into. More details around the savings that they have and their intent with that and also the intent of the ARPA dollars. Or not ARPA, but the third portion of their federal dollars, like what they wanna do with that eight hundred thousand dollars in total.
I, I can't say, and I, I can't give you exact details without the spreadsheet in front of me, but they, every penny. Just about every penny of a hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Was not spent out of the allotment that you provided to them for the COVID relief fund for the Board of Ed. And they did use it for items that were associated with the COVID and things that they had to implement. I just don't have the list. In front of me, but I'm certainly sure that.
Does anybody have any questions for Lisa on the finance? Okay. All right, we have discussed. Eight dot seven, discussion on town representation on the central regional tourism district Board of Directors.
The. The central region, Ms. Bond reached out to me recommending that, that recommendation. Advising that Brenda Fousey's term will be up coming in September and they. Are wanting to know what Talon would like to do in a replacement or reappointment. And so what I, I did was I brought forth. The request for all to decide which way you wanna go. I shared information about what's involved in the, in the process. And it does, some of the responsibilities and all that. Also, I did ask. You know, did it have to be a town council member? And they did say. You can appoint a resident, someone who works in the tourism industry business, or, or someone from the economic development. It, it's, you know, up to the council to decide what you wanna do. I know. That they, they. Did. Hope that maybe Brenda could be reappointed, but certainly I understand also that you may wanna have other industry involved. They do feel that she's done a phenomenal job for them and one of the best members that they've had. This is what was shared with me. And I may have included that. Certainly, that would be up to all of you to decide what route you wanna go. Alls I need is, you know, to get this to you for you to decide how you wanna move forward, but it certainly in here includes. Everything that they would be required to do. It sounds like it's quite a bit. And definitely you would wanna have someone from the tourism or. Some sort of restaurant, somebody, somebody who's willing to put in the time and really carry on forward. The hard work that Brenda has done if she's not the person who does move forward. And that's, it's up to you, you wanna do. I just wanted to bring this to you because they're requesting we try to get it filled before September twenty-fourth.
Which, yeah. So, I see Brenda's hand is up. Before I go to you, Brenda. I wanted to, I wanted to kinda like give a, a, a brief review on why this. We have to look at whether or not we want to open this up basically to anybody who wants to apply to it and. Brenda, the reason that I was going there is because with you not running again, last time we appointed you from the town council. Cause it came up, we looked at it and Brenda volunteered to do this position. And she's done it for the last three years and she's done it well. But I think. It doesn't hurt to look to see if there's other people in the community that were interested in this, that have this expertise also. And Brenda would, if Brenda wants to reapply for it, then obviously she would be considered along with everybody else at that point. That was where I was headed on having this on the discussion thing. Either way, the town council has to decide who they want to appoint. To the tourism council. So I, district, I'm sorry, district. So I figured we needed to start those conversations now. Unfortunately, I don't think we found out Lisa that long time ago enough to have the discussions earlier. Now we're kinda.
I just got this.
We're kind of down to the wire. If they want somebody by the twenty-fourth, you know, if we can, if there's any leeway on that position to, to be able to advertise it to the public. To see if anybody's interested in doing this, to review. I'm just concerned whether or not we're gonna have the time, adequate time to do it by the twenty-fourth of September.
Yes, thank you. I had brought this up, I brought it to your attention, I think, a month or, or two ago, that my. Going to be up. And I encouraged us to take a look and see if there was other people involved in the tourism industry. Now, I am a hospitality recruiter. I do have my thumb on the pulse of the industry. And as you know, I ha, I do have a good relationship with many businesses here in town, in historic district, et cetera. But having me take both, I encouraged us to take a look and see if there was someone maybe in a restaurant. We don't have an inn anymore, but someone who works in the industry, because there's a lot of networking that goes on with this role. There's lots of opportunities for businesses to be able to talk to partners. Inside of the state of Connecticut and help find ways for them to expand their reach. In, increase tourism to their local community, to their specific business. For example. Some of the members own inns inside of Connecticut and what they will do is offer to hold one of the tourism's. Quarterly meetings at their inn so that they can help, you know, promote their business and let other people. See and maybe partner with them. There is a lot of work that gets done in, in here. Sometimes it's only a couple hours of week. Sometimes it's thirty or forty hours that you can spend in a week doing work for them, depending on how active you get. I wanna point out one thing, the meetings, my first year, the meetings were. Very, I, I was lucky enough that most of the meetings were close, that I was able to leave the quarterly meeting and still be able to make the town council meeting. And then after that, we had the pandemic, so I was able to do the meetings online. However, that's not gonna always be the case. The meetings are usually the fourth Tuesday of the month and it would. Show, it could have a, an impact on attendance if you pick someone from the town council. The responsibilities vary widely, like one of the things that I've, that I'm signed up to do is. Volunteer up at the Big E next month before my terms up, so that, you know, that's one of the things you can do. Another thing was I called over a hundred and twenty venues one day in the state of Connecticut, historical venues, to find out. What their hours are and, and update their webpages and stuff like that. So it's very, it's varied. And you're not just working for the town, you're working for the state, specifically the region. So I thought I'd give that kind of update. Again, it would be great to have someone from the tourism industry, a restaurant owner, to do this. But if not, I'd, I'd love to continue this role. I think that we've had a lot of positive connections in Talon because we've never had a representative before. When this role opened up, I went to, Steve Rupner was the town manager at the time. I said, listen, if no one else is gonna do it, I'll do it. Because I think it's important Talon is represented. And that's how I ended up with the role. Because he had asked a number of times and nobody stepped forward. So if nobody steps forward that is in the tourism industry, I'd love to do it again. I will apply for it, but again, I think, you know, there's an opportunity here for some networking that could be very beneficial for our community.
Thank you, Brenda. That was, that was very helpful. And thank you for the three years that you've been doing this, so. I think if we open it up and use what you've just provided and what we have here. Perhaps through the EDC or local, local restaurant owners or people in the travel industry. Hospitality industry across the board, see if there's any interest in it. We can kinda go through and, and, and see. I think it's important to be able to communicate what you said, that the commitment, the time commitment that is involved with it. Because, you know, we wanna make sure Talon is, is represented well for central tourism. Does anybody have any clue?
Thank you, ma'am chair. And thank you, Ms. Fousey. That was outstanding and we do appreciate. I think it's been great that with regard to this, I think that the question would be is that, is that. Is to see if Lisa could contact them and, and see if we can delay any type of appointment. They had to give us a little bit of time and just because one month trying to find somebody, you know, it's, as you said, ma'am chair, it'd be a lot to work on. Where you'd have to advertise like almost immediately and then we'd have to. Go through it, we'd have to go through a vetting process, we'd have to see if there's anybody that's gonna apply and then that's a whole process in and of itself. So I think it's something that we could, if we could see how long we could get before we need to name somebody. If they could give us like an additional month even, which would be one meeting and then one meeting for them. And then we could go from there. I think that'd be optimal and then open it up to, to, as, as Ms. Fousey mentioned. Open it up to the, to the community and seeing if there's anyone else that would like to apply.
Just to lose point there, this is a state commission and the, the dates are hard set by the state. We don't have any wiggle room. The first meeting, you end up getting selected onto your boards and commissions from inside of this group. So some people might be put on marketing, some people might be put on. Outreach, other people, you know, you end up getting, someone else might be put on budget, things like that. So. Missing that first meeting means you're missing all of the organizational information that may be happening. I don't, I don't believe there's going, I mean, if you leave the role open, that just means that you've missed the opportunity for that person to. Established in the group and there's only four meetings a year, so.
I think we, I think if we can get something out fairly quickly, so an e-blast out and reach out to the EDC specifically. And ask for, you know, no more than a, a two-week period of people replying back. Today is August. Twenty-fourth, so you know, that gets us to like the second full week of, first full week of September. And if we wait till the end of the first full week of September, then we can definitely at least have, we can gauge if there's anybody who's interested or not. At least that's the first step. So if we can get something out fairly quickly, I think that would probably be beneficial. Perfect. All right, is everybody good with that? Okay. All right, eight dot eight, appointments to vacancies in various municipal boards and commissions. We have a few tonight.
Just point it up here, all right. Steve Jones, I'd make a motion that we approve the reappointment of Vincent Setson. To the Water Pollution Control Authority and the new appointment of Rita Lenchik to the Mental Health and Substance Use Advisory Task Force. And Justin, here at Pink, I know I'm already quoting that. I went up earlier to ask him how to pronounce his name. He's with a T of silent, so this is for any future reference. But that would be the motion.
Little bit lost talking there.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, Lou? Kurt? John?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill? I'm an eye, it's unanimous, thank you very much. We have no old business to discuss tonight. Report the town manager. I bet you've been talking all night, just so.
The quick update, just regarding, I know you like to be updated on who's doing what on the boards and commissions for Zoom meetings and such. In person is the Veterans Recognition Commission and the WPCA. All Remote Birch Grove School Committee, Commission on People with Disabilities, Conservation Commission, Housing Authority. Library Advisory Board, Parks and Recreation Board, Town Water Commission, Mental Health Task Force. Hybrid, of course, is Board of Ed, you guys. Economic Development Commission, Planning and Zoning and Zoning Board of Appeals. So that's your update regarding that. It's been a fun couple of weeks in my new position. I'm actually enjoying it. Even though we've had all kinds of challenges. Certainly the storm last weekend, I'm, I'm used to dealing with the emergency management and storms. I know it wasn't as bad as it could be. Thank God, but we certainly were in full force and hopefully I did try to keep the public. As up to date as possible. I know the timing of some of the communications were fucked because we were waiting on. Information from other sources to pull it together. But everything went well, I gotta say. What a great team we have here. It really. Public Works, Public Safety, Board of Education, we were all meeting on the weekend, working together. Things were happening and, and emergencies that did occur were getting addressed. Public Works did a lot of pre-planning. And pre, pre-work regarding some of the drainage areas where we've had trouble. We tried to do. A lot of preliminary work to try to help alleviate some of the issues that we're aware of. Yes, we did have some areas that flooded. We did have trees down, but they were responsive. We had, we had some power outages, but again, Eversource was working directly with our team. To get things taken care of.
Thank you, everybody. It was, it was very well managed.
I, I really appreciated the teamwork that we had. The only other thing, as I mentioned earlier, we're, we're moving forward with the budget. Not the budget, but the, the audit. And hopefully, you know, try to get that all finished by November to have a, a final report for all of you, but at least we had a. A snapshot tonight. Regarding the finance office, I've been wearing several hats lately. I do have someone helping me just for the next couple of weeks and I've got her two days a week. It's Chris Hutton, who used to be the finance director for myself. She's doing what she can do in those two days a week that she's here, but she's gonna be leaving for some surgery and. I'm not gonna have her. We, I reached out to a lot of my colleagues and everyone that had previously been interested. Has taken on other jobs. I have one colleague who lives in Bridgeport and he says if he could do it virtually, he'd be somewhat maybe interested to try to help. He really wants to try to help me. We'll see there. I, I advertise with the government finance officers. We really, nobody really wants to do part-time. And like I said, a lot of my colleagues already have other jobs. So I decided to put an ad in the paper. I'm gonna see if we get any results that way. I also have been working with an agency. To see what type of talent they have out there, but that tends to cost more money doing it that way. So that's like a last resort. But I'm, I'm looking at that. So in the meantime, between Chris and, and I have another person who's helping out. A little bit one day a week as well, and myself, we've all been pulling together. So. I've been trying to deal with a bond issue, a note issue coming up next week. So I've been putting all that together, the official statement. And trying to keep the audit going. So I'm doing a little bit of everything, but we're keeping us going and, you know, there's no major issues. That I'm aware of right now.
Perfect. Great. Thank you very much. Adoption of masks.
Steve Jones, I would make a motion that we adopt the minutes as outlined. If I don't, sorry. As outlined in eleven.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Lou? John?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill? Thank you very much. I'm an aye, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, correspondence to council. Brenda?
Brenda Felusi here with correspondence. I got, um, two emails soliciting something or asking for junk. One was an email about a personnel matter and a town personnel matter. And the other one was an email concerning, um, information about Wi-Fi and RF fields.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Uh, Chairperson's report, I don't have much tonight other than to say, uh, we are starting conversations tomorrow, seven o'clock, right? At seven o'clock here. And, um, you'll be able to view the meeting via Zoom. It's a special meeting, uh, between the town council, planning and zoning, um, Kevin Eklund and our lawyer, I believe, correct?
We did not invite the attorney.
We did not invite the attorney. All right, talking about the 370 something page legalization of cannabis law. And what steps we as a town have to take or need to be considering taking in, in regard to that law. So we're having our first conversation as a joint meeting between us and planning and zoning, and we're going to come up with a plan of what we have to do, uh, as a community to decide where Talon is going to fall on the line of, um, allowing or not allowing recreational sales. That's all that I have. So if you, uh, if you want to look at the town calendar, you can see the, um, the meeting information. There is no public comment in tomorrow's meeting. It is just a joint session between the areas of us. There will be meetings with public comment, but, um, it will not be that is occurring tomorrow. That gets me to 14, communications and petitions from council persons. Does anybody have anything?
Just a couple. So first I forgot in my updates really is on the rotational meetings on the board bed. So we did have a meeting. I believe on the, sorry. On the 11th, um, there was a lot of discussion around there about the mask ordinances and mask mandates for the school system. It involves a potential communication from board members of the state regarding those, um, requirements. And then additionally, they have a meeting on the 25th, but do it again. As you mentioned, there are joint meeting. I'll be unable to make that. So just preemptively encourage counselors to review the minutes after the meeting on the 25th. This one item, I'm just kind of housekeeping. I think we've done a great job having hybrid meetings so far. And I'm, so tonight is the first meeting with other than new mask mandate that we've been kind of engaged in this format. It's definitely difficult and it's been a very long meeting. But I just want to recognize, I felt like I was hearing some chatter from other counselors while other counselors are speaking. And I just want to make sure for the good of the order that we're respectful to all residents, elected officials and appointed officials as though they're in the room with us. So I just felt I needed to say that. Um, but again, I understand for late night and appreciate everyone's respect and stability, knowing that we all occasionally disagree with each other due to party preference or even personal, personal preference. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Um, anybody else have anything? I'm not seeing anything. All right. That gets us to public listed participation. And any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three minute limit, if you are on the bike, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, it is star nine. There is nobody in the room right now, so you don't have to worry about that. I will call on you as a order of handbrays. Please state your name and address for the break. All right, not seeing anyone. That gets us to 16.
All right, Steve Jones, I make a motion to adjourn at 10:33 PM.
Any discussion? Those in favor? Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Eve?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
I'm an aye, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Sorry for the long evening. Everybody have a good night.